Good evening. The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for June the 5th, 2018 is now in session. Please join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a brief moment of silence. Counsel, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda. Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda? We have an agenda. Counsel, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the last meeting's council minutes, and resolution supporting the funding of a coastal storm damage mitigation fund by the state. Any discussion at all about that? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye. This time I'll call the town planner. Good evening, Wes.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have two brief reports for you tonight as far as building permit numbers go. As you recall, I wasn't able or didn't have the numbers for April, so I'm going to do April and May. Going to start with May or April, and there were sixteen zoning permits issued, forty building permits issued. Those consisted of five new single-family dwellings, three additions, two remodels, four repairs, six accessories, and twenty others. The total amount of fees collected in April was $21,334.82. For permitting for May, there were twelve zoning permits issued, fifty building permits issued. Those consisted of three new single-family dwellings, five additions, three remodels, five repairs, two accessories, and thirty-two others. As of today, there are twenty-two single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected in May was $13,052.10. With respect to code enforcement, there was one warning citation issued in May for a right-of-way obstruction. Wanted to give a brief town code update project update. The planning board concluded its review of Module One at their special meeting they held on May 7th. I've sent all of their comments to Code Right, which they will incorporate into a new draft of Module One, and town staff will provide comments on Modules Two and Three. The next step is to hold a second public forum in order to update the public on project progress, introduce the drafts of the modules, and collect input on the modules. Once that has been complete, we can begin the adoption process, which will require a recommendation from the planning board and subsequently a public hearing held by town council. Last thing I wanted to touch on is planning board terms. The terms for two regular member positions, and both alternate member positions will be ending on June 30th, and we will provide council with any and all applications received for potential appointments for the July council meeting. Any questions?
Counsel? Thank you, Wes.
Thank you all.
David Cole.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We're trying a different new format here that Jennifer's tried for our month report, mostly so I can see it without using my cheater glasses. The month of May 2018, we'll go through the incidents. Those are the actual crimes that were reported. We had two assaults, four breaking and entering, three larcenies, we had one auto theft, we had a fraud, four vandalism, six drug-related, we had three driving while intoxicated, and eight under miscellaneous, for a total of thirty-two reported incidents. Under the criminal arrest, we had two arrests for assaults. We made three arrests on the breaking and entering, one arrest for the larceny, one arrest for the auto theft, and we had two arrests on the vandalism, and six arrests for the drugs, as well as three arrests for driving while intoxicated. Total of twenty-six arrests for the month of May. We had a total of seven motor vehicle accidents. Officers conducted eighty-four traffic stops. Excuse me. Out of that eighty-four traffic stops, they issued forty-four written citations and another fifty warning citations. And then under your local ordinance violations, we handed out fifteen. Most of those were all parking-related. Now, as you can see, the bottom, the calls for service and the breakdown, we had a total of seventeen hundred calls for service for the month of May 2018. Any questions?
Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our fire chief, Edlin Barker. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, everybody. So for the month of May, the fire department responded to fifty-four calls. Thirty-two were EMS, five structured fires, and it breaks down pretty simply as three building fires, one mobile home fire, one outside equipment fire, two patient assists, twenty-seven EMS calls, two motor vehicle accident with no injuries, one elevator rescue, one hazardous condition, five service calls, which are in essence calls for wheelchairs and things like that, one lockout, one assist invalid, one dispatch and canceled en route, two authorized control burning, and six fire alarms, two of them which were malfunction smoke detectors. Once again, fifty-four for the month of May, and that's it. Any questions?
Counsel?
Where was the fire line, I mean, the power line down?
It was over on Ocean Boulevard, up there, the oceanfront. It's only there in Beach Tree.
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you. Town manager, Peter Rasko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a short manager's report for you tonight. First is the lifeguards are on duty in our public ocean beaches. There are three hardstands up now. The fourth will be going up next week. As you can, also, if you've seen the beach, there are two roving ATVs that are part of our service as well that are townwi- beachwide. Preparations for the directed no-left-turn exercise on June 23rd, 24th, from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. on both of those days are still on the way. We are plant- we're ready to go with it at this point. There will be, the police department will also have counters at strategic locations throughout the name, so that hopefully at the end of this exercise, we'll have some data to bring back to you for discussion. Again, it'll start at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 23rd. Notifications have gone out to as many institutions as possible, and it's gotten widespread press coverage already. There'll be signage facing the eastbound traffic, and of course, the left-turn lane there will be blocked on both sides of it with offsetting barrels, so that anybody who attempts to take a left turn, it will be obvious that that's what they're doing. And it'll also block the Southern Shores Landing accessway on 158 as well. One final item came up last meeting, the proposed, with the draft contract between the town and the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department. The draft version is with the attorneys for both parties at this point, and so we're just waiting to get back from them, and then at that point, we'll, we will see what needs to be done as far as the contracts and discuss with you a schedule for the fall, so that that particular document, as well as the other items that you've put out for the fire department, and it's possible new building would come potentially at the same time. So we're looking probably at the end of the summer. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions on town operations at this point.
Any questions, counsel?
Is this normally where you mention that the capital improvement committee met?
I believe you got that as a, as a board report under 3B this, for this meeting, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter. Town attorney?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. This time I'll call on the planning board chair for reporting the planning board. Good evening, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. This is an update on the additional things that the planning board will be bringing to the council and not cover the, the reports that I will be making later in the agenda. ZTA 1803, that's the one to establish parking signage setback requirements for fire stations, you will be, you will have to deal with in the future. The same with ZTA 18-04, lot coverage, that is the revised lot coverage ZTA. The initial one was brought to you, I believe, last year sometime, and it was denied or voted down by the council. Commercial design standards is another thing that will be coming before the council. This is one of those issues that came out of the board's review of Module One, of the town code update. And speaking of town code update, the planning board completed its review on May 7th, and Wes has put all those comments together and sent them to the contractor. The last thing that I wanted to mention during this report is that I've been a member of the planning board for over nine years. My current term ends in the end of this month, and there are other things that I want to do, so I have not accepted or sought another term on the planning board. I'd like to thank all the councils that I've, I've worked with for appointing me to the planning board and giving me the opportunity to serve the town. I'd also like to thank all the present and former board members that I have served with. It's been a dedicated, hard-working group of people, and I think that the planning board has done a good, good work and have made TOS a better place to live. I'd like to thank Wes for all the work and support he has provided to the planning board. A lot of people don't realize how much work that is, from getting the ZTAs and conditional use permits and variances in shape to come to the planning board, taking notes at the meetings, preventing staff, presenting staff reports after the meetings, preparing draft minutes, and then if there's any decision documents that I have to sign, preparing those for my signature and review. So, Wes, thanks a lot. The last person that I would really want to thank is my wife for putting up with all the time spent doing planning board work and the impact that this had on my family. So, that ends, ends my report. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Sam. I want to personally thank you for your service to our town.
Thank you.
It's remarkable. Thank you.
I don't know whether that applause was for appreciation or for the fact that I'm leaving.
We love your humor.
Appreciate it.
Just take it any way you can get it, Sam. Report and recommendation of Capital Infrastructure Improvement Planning Committee, Councilman Jim Connors.
Yes, as we brought up at the last meeting, the capital improvements committee met on April 4th, and there was a couple significant things that came out of that. One of them was is that Capital Improvement Committee voted six to zero on the prioritized streets to implement for next year, and that will come before council end July, so that we can take action on that. But another thing that a lot of people have been waiting on is the Capital Improvements Committee also voted six to zero to, in response to the correspondence that was submitted to council last year, November 8th, to, they voted to not expand any funds on capital improvements to Fairway Drive at this time. So, at this meeting here, I think what we need to do is, as council, do we accept their recommendation and inform the authors of this correspondence, or do we have any other action that we want to take at this time?
Counsel, you've heard, you've heard the recommendation of the CIP committee from Mr., from, from Councilman Jim Connors, and that recommendation is considered a motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the, on this committee recommendation should be, should be take place at this time. Anybody want to, want to discuss this or have any comments about it?
So what's the motion?
The motion is to accept the finding of the Capital Improvements Committee, reference to the improvements on Fairway Drive. The committee's, the committee report is, is basically a motion in itself, and it doesn't require a second, but I am asking for discussion if someone has anything they'd like to discuss relative to that.
What's the reason for not taking action?
I'm sorry?
What's the reason for not taking any action to remedy the problems that were identified by several residents on Fairway Drive?
The members of the, of the CIP committee, I think all of them except one, visited the site on numerous occasions and saw the conditions that, that we were told existed there, and we couldn't find those conditions actually existing. We didn't see the flooding, we didn't see the overwash, we didn't see the standing water. So, not, not seeing what, what was supposedly the basis of the complaints, the committee decided there was no, no further action needed to be taken, no capital, no capital funds to be expended.
Yeah. I just wonder why people got organized and came to us and asked for help, and we're saying you don't have a problem, and they say they do.
Right. The committee took a pretty careful look, and some non, some non-members of the committee actually went, their councilmembers, went and looked at the situation after heavy rainfalls and couldn't find the situation that was subscribed to us. There was also a difference, I'll just mention this, there was also a difference in, in some of the concerns. Some wanted certain things done, others didn't want certain things done. There was, there was a conflict there as far as agreement by the, by the parties, what they would like to see. That weighed, I think that weighed to some degree on the, in the committee's decision. Any other questions, counsel?
Did the committee, I have to ask this, because the town engineer made a recommendation, it's my recollection, Peter can tell me I'm wrong on this, if he, but there was a recommendation made to correct something on that street from you and the, and the engineer. Am I not correct?
That's correct. We, we wrote to the complainant back in October, after the town engineer visited the site, which we do for every yard in town who complains about stormwater coming from the street on their property. We offered her the opportunity to talk again about options in the right-of-way in front of her property, and we never got a response back from her at all. That offer is still there, and I'll still communicate, continue to communicate that to her. But as far as capital improvements, that was, they were all referred to the, to the CIP committee.
I was getting ready to make that point, that we could probably do something within that right-of-way, but it doesn't rise to being a capital improvement.
So what's your response going to be to the, to the people that are complaining?
My, my point is, our engineer said there was some issue there, or, and maybe not, but in offering to fix something that's wrong, I mean, there's a, there's something there. And this does not say, if I'm reading this right, let's see, that further improvements, it does not say capital improvements, by the way, and that'd have to be amended to say capital improvements, because...
Upon motion of committee member Jim Crandall, seconded by committee Andy McCowley, the CIP committee unanimously recommends that council not expand any funds on capital improvements to Fairway Drive at this time.
Okay. I can live with that part, but we still need to explain. Well, that's, that's, that's an issue. I think, go ahead.
Yes, if the council accepts the recommendation of the committee, my plan as the town manager was to communicate to the complainant that the council took this action, which clearly applied to the four items that they were requesting, which rose to the level of capital improvements. Other than that, our offer is still there to always communicate and discuss things to occur in the right-of-way in front of their properties, that like we do for every citizen that has stormwater problems coming off the street. And we've communicated that to her before, and we got no response, and we'll continue to communicate that to her.
Any further discussion, counsel? I will now call the question on the CIP committee's recommendation. All in favor of approving the recommendation? Please signify by saying aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Motion's made and carried to, to, no more significant capital improvements on Fairway Drive at this time. Thank you.
And, and one other matter on the Capital Improvements Committee, in our packet, we have a listing of who was there. Glenn Rigan, Andy McCowley, Al Uerling, Jim Crandall, Tom Bennett, and myself. The one that was not there and has been missing for a number of, a couple of these meetings was Mr. Gomez. If, Ms. Councilman McDonald, if I recall correctly, you were the one that had, asked him to serve on that committee, is that correct?
I did.
Would you be willing to have a discussion with him to see if he wants to continue or if he does not? Maybe you can come up with somebody else that can...
Sure.
...attend the meetings. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I, I think that covers the Capital Improvements Committee report.
Thank you, Jim. This time we'll call for general, general public comment. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council, and citizens of Southern Shores. I have comments on two, two points. The first, on the left-turn trial run. I hope that placing of counters would include at the outlets of Sea Oats and Wax Myrtle, because those towns are affected. I'm sure Juniper is another one that would be important to monitor. And also, counters that would give us information about what number of vehicles are leaving our town on Route 12, and what number of vehicles are entering, coming off the bridge, so that we have an idea of the overall volume for that particular weekend. It would also be good to claim, collect the same data for a few weeks beforehand and at least a few weeks after, recognizing July 4th, the two weekends following that are affected by July 4th, and they may not, not be representative of the kind of traffic you'd see on a 23rd, so maybe collected for three or four weeks afterwards, if it's feasible, if it's not too expensive, because just having one weekend of data, it's just a snapshot. If you don't have any comparison or reference, it doesn't really help us understand the effect that it had. You know, we need to see other conditions so we can get a before and after. Second comment. Mr. Connors' comment on the May 1st town council meeting that personal information of town staff be treated with sensitivity and protected from public scrutiny is reasonable and laudable. For once, he and I agree on something. However, Southern Shore town staff are public employees whose salaries and benefits information are not personal information, but are public information. When staff accepted their positions in the town administration, they needed to recognize that their salaries and benefits are not confidential. During the May 1st meeting, Mr. Connors referred to the sharing of town information, town staff personal information as doxing. From Merriam-Webster Dictionary, the definition of doxing is the verb, in the verb form, to publicly identify or publish private information about someone, especially as a form of punishment or revenge. The noun form, the term used for the troll harassment technique of finding and then posting a sense, user's sensitive personal information. Mr. Connors incorrectly applied the term doxing to the public release of town managers' salaries and benefits. That information is not private and was not shared with malicious intent or to harass. Mr. Connors should know the term doxing, because he has used a false identity in a fake Facebook page and a fake email address, and he used that, those vehicles to harass individuals, to, to provide incomplete and incorrect information on individuals in the town, including one of his competitors for the town council seat. He has publicly acknowledged this on television and in the OBX Sentinel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Normally I'd want to reply, but I'm not going to on this. I will say, though, that I stand by everything I said.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor, town council members. My name is Steve Kusas. I'm a businessman and a lifelong resident of Southern Shores and Kitty Hawk areas. I spoke with the town council last month in support of Spiritus Gannacopolis Business Venture in Southern Shores, and after hearing from the people in the audience, a vote was held, and the council members voted three to one to support the venture. I'd like to address some of the talking points tonight about the venture. Spiritus wants to open up an ice cream service with walk-up and drive-through, and it's a family-run business, not a chain, small operator, not a corporate entity. He has an interest in this area. The design of the building itself is a flat top, just like Mr. Stick and the rest of the guys designed back in the day. My mother lives in a flat top. My brother owns two flat tops. Spiritus undertook this business venture designing it as a flat top, so it would look nice in our community. That gives you the mindset of this gentleman that's trying to open this business. He's also extremely school-oriented, and if you look up in Elizabeth City and you look at his resume up there with his place up there, what he's done for the school systems, it's amazing. It speaks for itself. I, I challenge you guys to go up there and find out. It's, it's really wonderful. He's already reached out to the schools down here, and I think just in that mindset alone, without even having even opened the business. Some of the objectives that we heard, the objections that we heard, was, just, it, to me, it didn't offer any, there was no... just, it, it, to me, it didn't offer any, there was no statistical objections, nobody measured anything. We're talking about rights of ways and, I don't know if you guys know this, but there's 14 drive-throughs up here, 14. That's all the banks and the two fast food places. And I sat out there. It takes about the same amount of time to order our kids' Happy Meal as it does to make a deposit at BBNT or any of the other banks. So I don't understand the, the complaint about the traffic violations. This particular lady, I don't know if she's here this evening or not, talked about how the traffic on Juniper Trail would be backed up. Um, you know, once again, I live off of Juniper Trail, on Spindrift Trail. I take that particular way, I don't know, for the last 20 years. I don't see where a little 800 square foot, um, ice cream shop is going to do any more backing up of traffic than any of the other places. Anyway, um, I think it's, the impact is, um, is really positive for the town. Uh, we had some people here write a blog about it and, and that blog, I don't know where she got that information or those statistics, I'd like to see that. Anyway, thank you very much for my time. And, um, I just thank you guys, um, for letting me get up here and, and tell you, I think that we-
Thank you, Steve. Kurt? Sorry, I can't. I may be, I may be able to pronounce it, but I'm not sure.
I'm Kurt Stefierik.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you, Mr. Mayor? I'm Kurt Stefierik, I live on Duckwoods Drive and like to just express a concern and I have a request for the weekend of June 23rd with the no left turn onto Dogwood. My concern is about what people are going to do to get around that left-hand turn, that they're going to come down our street, other streets, make U-turns to get down there, make a right and go through there anyway. Um, I can certainly understand the request of the first gentleman that spoke about gathering the data. I think that's a very good idea. What I would like to request for our street is the presence of one of the police speed limit signs, so that people, at least if they're going down there and getting to the end of the turn around, they get the, uh, you know, 25 mile an hour speed limit and they're not speeding down our dead-end street. And that's it.
Thank you. George Berry? Ethan George?
Yeah, you guys, two topics, real quick. I support the mini tower issue, but, uh, there's an option, I brought it up before, that individuals can have these towers on their property rather than have them on town right of way. So I spoke to the mini tower company, they were very pleased that I reached out to them, took my name, and they, they really wish they could get in contact with other homeowners that are near their areas where they wanted the towers. So can the town provide public record contact information, it's public record, to the mini tower companies so that they can at least reach out to those homeowners to see if a mini tower could be put on their property? It would save it being in the town's right of way, take the monkey off the back. There are other towers in the town that are, are not on the town's property. So I ask that, that to be considered. The other topic is, um, you know, we selected Southern Shores to be our home because of the beauty and the low-density housing. Uh, we, we've been coming to the beach for many years. I came here when I was like seven, it was fantastic. And the ambiance, we chose Southern Shores because of the ambiance this town had. Low density was perfect. We could build our house, our rental houses, and fit within the community. And to me, that was perfect. So building a home and lots that are 50 to 60 foot wide degrade from the ambiance of Southern Shores. There are other towns that may permit this, uh, we should not. They can go to another town. We really need to control the lot subdivision process. Okay, we need to provide clear guidance to people buying property and people wanting to build, but we need to be firm in our values of this town. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, George. Chad Weeks? Good evening, Chad.
Thank you, thank you, uh, thank y'all for giving me a couple of minutes here, or a few minutes. But I still, you know, as, as a friend of Spears, as a supporter, we still go way back and, um, don't want to reiterate all that stuff again. Um, but I think we know that what he's looking to do is, um, you know, bring something local to us with a good design that the building, I would hope, would be there for a long time and, uh, and, and call out to our culture and heritage of, of the area here, um, in the retro style. I think you're, he's very experienced, the, the product price will be good. I think everything's great and you're not going to find, in my opinion, something, somebody better than him, uh, to, to do what he's trying to do. There's been a lot of thought going in that. What I kind of took away from last time, and I respect that, is that it seemed like the town planner folks had done the homework on it, that if we restricted it down, the drive-through could work. Restrict it down to certain square feet, uh, it, it would not cause a problem so much in the future. So what I'm kept hoping that maybe it comes out of tonight or, or that break is that maybe we've had some time to do the homework, uh, to, to see how, kind of slow down, I guess, is, you know, kind of what the, uh, what the take was, to, to do that research and make sure that if we're able to say yes with that, that it doesn't impact, um, so many things in the, in the future. And hopefully, um, that is the case. But the thoughts I had on it also was, with that being such a small place, um, small facility or small building or lot, is something of a McDonald's Express, they're going to want a lot more parking, three parking spots is not going to do it. And the, the lot coverage is not going to allow that in that location, um, for what somebody else would want to do. So the only thing I get everything working there on that spot that's still had a drive-through would be a cleaners, or something like that. Wouldn't be something that would cause a problem, um, for you. And I would think anybody else under those same, um, square footage requirements and lot coverage requirements, uh, such as, you know, make town planning has alluded to, to stay in those requirements, you're not going to find a McDonald's Express or something that we kind of worry about and fear the worst with that. That's going to be able to make it work and stay within those. Normally something like that is part of a convenience store. Like we've got the one in, is it Coinchuck area, the McDonald's inside the Shell station or something. That's not, that wouldn't fly because of the lot coverage. So, anyway, I still think it's a great idea and, and hopefully, um, you know, respect you guys and, uh, hopefully y'all have had some, some time to slow down and see that this would work. And it's not something that's going to cause problems in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Chad. Charles? Sorry, I'm sorry, Charles, I couldn't read your last name, I apologize. Gregory, okay, got it, thank you.
I'm not going to be very eloquent because I didn't write anything in advance. But I just came to speak in support, as a year-round resident of, uh, full-time resident of Chickahawke and Southern Shores, I wanted to speak in support of Mr. Spears's flat-top drive-through facility. I'm familiar with new quality. I've changed positions this past year, but for seven years I was with Twitty and Company. And we would literally have people make runs and bring back. I think Southern Shores could use a positive business that is going to attract people. We've seen Wendy's open right across the street and traffic didn't come to a halt. Things like Steamers have opened and they did the additional entrance, traffic is still fine. So I just wanted to say, I support it. I've been somebody that's, every time I've gone to Elizabeth City, that's been one of my stops. So I think it would be a very positive addition to the community. And just when I texted some people that I know back from my Twitty days, one of the many excited comments I got, one is, we have been known to drive from Southern Shores to East City just for new quality. I think that speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Ursula Bateman? Good evening, Ursula.
I'm, I really do like the idea that we're having this, um, the end of June, no left turn. My concern is, you know where I live, the end of Sea Oats. I'm concerned that, um, all it's going to do is divert to Hickory and Hillcrest and jam up once again Sea Oats. So I want, I hope that these counters go on Hickory, Hillcrest and see what happens there. You know, because they're going to get, they're going to get the word, they're going to know to do that. And I think we're going to be jammed up again earlier than normal because we usually don't get jammed up till the beginning of July. As you all know, I could sell Sabrehot dogs out there all day long. So I hope that we get some counters on those roads, thanks.
Thank you, Ursula. This time I'll close public comment. Item five under Old Business, um, the second reading of zoning tax amendment dash 18 dash 05, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt you just for a second? It's, it's my understanding that Mr., uh, Councilman Nason has a, uh, financial conflict and that he's a, uh, that Mr. Spears, I'm sorry, I can't say your last name, is, uh, one of Mr. Nason's clients.
Yes.
So voting on this is probably a, a financial interest issue, um, conflict. And then, uh, being involved in the later quasi judicial hearing, if it comes up, is, is potential multiple different conflicts there. So I would ask that the council take a vote on whether or not to excuse Mr. Nason from both of those with the expectation that he'll return on, uh, for the new business, um, item 6A.
Thank you, Ben.
I would also request it.
All in favor of Mr. Nation being, being excused from discussing these, these two items? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You're, you're excused. The second reading of zoning tax amendment 18 dash 05. A zoning tax amendment application submitted by 5415 OBX LLC to amend the Southern Shores Town Code by amending section 36 dash 57, section 36 dash 163, and section 26 207 to establish a drive-through facility or establishment small as a conditional use in the C Gemma Commercial Zoning District applicable to parking requirements. The first reading passed by a margin of three to one on May 1st, 2018. I would ask Mr. McDonald if he would like to make a motion to, uh, to pass this second reading at this time.
I have a question for Ben.
Yes.
Let me find it. In this establishes a small drive-through facility, correct? Page four or five.
That's my understanding.
Section two.
Well, it defines it earlier and then gives the standards for what, what it can do on page four or five.
And it says that lot coverage shall, lot shall have frontage along US Highway 158. That applies to any thing that would come to us in the future, right?
Yes.
Am I correct in that?
To meet the standards to, to be a drive-through facility or establishment small, you'd have to do the 2,500 square feet, the location with a minimum of 100 feet from any residential zone, stacking for minimum of six cars, and you'd have to have frontage along US Highway 158.
Because we have commercial property going down Juniper Trail and here off of the, the beach road. So that wouldn't apply. There couldn't be a drive-through on Juniper Trail.
The way that's written, that's the way I interpret it.
The, the way the lots are currently aligned, there couldn't be. I'm, I'm assuming that nobody's going to come in and buy the whole entire, uh, shopping center and they would, they would then have frontage on 158, but they might put something that would be an ice cream shop, you know, or a drive-through back farther in the property. That could be one that would be on Juniper, but that's, I don't think that's a very likely opportunity.
But I agree, it's not that the property's already there on the, on the east side of Juniper.
I'm talking about, yeah, where the-
Where the bank is and where the, where the-
This side.
Law officers and so forth.
Right.
That would, again, that wouldn't work unless, unless that property at the time also fronted on 158, which currently I don't believe there's a property that does that that's not developed.
Well, there is property between this small strip mall that's right out here and the bank, which could, I don't know if it could route out behind, onto Juniper Trail. That could possibly be affected by that also.
As long as it has front, you know, as long as the, the lot has frontage on 158, it would meet the standards of, uh, of the ordinance as it's proposed.
Well, let me ask you.
I'll, I'll address that. The lot might be bigger. But that doesn't mean that the facility won't be smaller. But again, it, all that has to happen is that the, uh-
But one of the requirements is it has to front 158.
Correct, the property has to front 158.
Let me ask you this, Ben. The property that Gary was talking about between Town Bank and these strip malls over here where, um, Pizza Stop's located, is that considered frontage on 158?
Thinking of it, I mean, I, I'm not able to look at it right this second, but my recollection would be, yeah, it's, if it's right there next to Town Bank, Town Bank fronts on 158.
Actually, it's a access road, right there at the strip mall. And then the, most of that, rest of that property is owned by, I believe it's Chickahawke, Property Owners Association, so it's not-
No, it's private.
It's private land there? Well-
With that, uh, front's on 158, correct?
No, I mean, that's private property.
But it fronts, oh, it's not-
It fronts, actually it fronts, what, Clamshell?
I don't know, we could probably pull this up on GIS and C.
That's neither here nor there. It's, it opens the door for that in the future.
Any, any lot that-
Right.
That meets the other requirements and fronts on 158 would meet the standards of the provision.
But it has to be zoned commercial though, right?
Exactly. Right.
That's right.
Yes.
That's the land-
This is in the commercial district.
Well, the land between Town Bank and these strip malls, is that commercial or is that residential?
I don't know. And, and you have to remember, is there- You have to remember also, there's a minimum of 100 foot from residentially zoned property. So what's the property behind it? Again, you'd have to look at each indivi, whatever individual property comes to you. You have to see, you know, is the facility this proposed not exceeding 2,500 square feet? Is the location of the drive-through facility a minimum of 100 feet from residential zoned property? And does it front on 158? If it does all those things, it can be built in a commercial zone. If it doesn't, then it doesn't meet these requirements.
It changes one of those businesses on Juniper.
Right.
You know, you open the door.
Right.
That's a concern.
Have you, have you got your question answered?
Yes.
Are you willing to go ahead and make that motion to, to, uh, to, uh, at the second reading to approve this?
Yeah, go ahead.
ZTA?
I will.
Have a motion to approve, uh, ZTA 18 05 for the second time. All in favor, council, I'm sorry. Need a second?
I, I will second that.
All right. I have a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, my concern is, and George Berry expressed it very eloquently, we're, we're here for small density. I just can't see opening the door and setting a precedent for future, uh, development on small lots like this with drive-throughs. It's, it's going to create an atmosphere that we see in our neighboring towns, Kitty Hawk and Kill Devil Hills. Is that really what, what we want here? That's my only concern, I'm not against ice cream by any means, I love it. And I think, uh, the plan, uh, for this, uh, for this shop is, uh, is a good idea. But I'm concerned about opening the door for more similar type, uh, situations where we have drive-through, whatever. As I understand it, that lot on the corner there, um, next door to, um, Wells Fargo, where Starbucks was originally going to go, that, that property's available. What are we going to do there?
It's, it's not available, it's used for sewage now, Fred.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's overflow for the Southern Shore.
You'll have a chance to Michael, I think at the time of the public hearing, which comes up pretty quick. I see it as a, as a, as an improvement to our commercial district. We're not putting this on, 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 uh, residential property. It's part of a commercial zone district. We have a very limited commercial area. I don't see anything that's, uh, in my mind, that's, uh, takes away from the, whatever Southern Shores is as far as ambiance by, with an ice cream parlor. I just don't see that. Maybe some future use in life, you put in an adult bookstore, yeah, I'd say you're probably on solid ground, but-
Well, that'd be the next thing to come with a drive-through.
Well, you never know, you never know. But I just think with the use they're, they're asking to us to consider, I think it's a, it's a reasonable request. I think it makes, it's an addition to our community.
I think it makes, it's an addition to our community as far as the commercial property.
No, no, I'm not opposed to additions to our community, I'm just concerned about what's the future going to bring with future development.
Well, the shopping center had planned to do significant upgrades in there, change the book of it dramatically, which hasn't happened.
No, it hasn't happened, and that's not the same principle. The principle I'm concerned about is small lots with drive-throughs. Is that desirable for the community? That's my concern. Fact, it's located in a commercial district facing one fifty-eight is probably counter to the argument I just made, that's a different location. But if we're going to have this whole string of little small businesses there with drive-throughs, I don't know if that's desirable or not.
The owner of that shopping center has not approached us with any further use of that property as far as changing anything.
One of the things that's lost in this discussion is this new quality ice cream shop is going to be sitting between two banks and they both have drive-through facilities, so...
They're not defined as drive-throughs, Mr. Collins.
No, but they may not be defined that way, but in reality, they are. And so, I don't think that the ice cream store is going to take away from the ambiance or anything of the town, I would welcome them into the town.
Well, my thought, Fred, is that we approved the moving of Starbucks and two other businesses into that corner before it was taken over by Overflow, and we were going to put, or allow CVS to do a standalone, that didn't happen, so, you know, this, this project, I don't think there's anything else that could fit on that piece of property the way it's set up right now. And we're going to hold them to having a high-quality process, and I think that's what we need to do. That's my thought, is we did approve that other thing that was on the other end, I was more opposed to that than I am this one because it is between two banks. So that's my thought on that one. And that's all I have to say, Tom.
Thank you, Gary. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor of approving the second reading of ZTA eighteen zero five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fred, you, you're all opposed?
Well, y'all got me on the fence now.
Come on, Fred, you can do the right thing.
It doesn't have to be, but...
It hasn't got to be, I think that'd be all four of us.
It doesn't. A three-one vote is a pass for the text amendment.
If you're more comfortable voting against it, Fred, that's fine, you do what you think.
Well, it got mixed feelings, I really feel for the, for the Spiros, I don't want to see him not get this opportunity because I think, everything I've heard, he's a great guy, he's got a great product, and he wants to do good things for the community. I just don't like the process that we go through with, anytime anybody comes in and we change the rules just to make it fit, but...
I'm going to try it one more time, all in favor?
I'll go.
A motion, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, W N N C, four votes is on. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, everyone.
Ben Stiller.
Quasi judicial land use matter, CUP eighteen dash zero one. A conditional use permit application submitted by five four one five OBX LLC to open a drive-through facility or establishment small at fifty-four fifteen North Croatan Highway. Planning Board Chairman at this time to receive your recommendation, Sam.
The conditional use permit eighteen dash oh one for an ice cream shop was submitted by five four one five OBX LLC doing business as new quality ice cream. It meets the requirements of the town code. It has been reviewed, the site plan has been reviewed by the police and the fire departments, and they didn't have any problems with it. The NC DOT driveway permit has been properly executed. And in addition, the proposed building looks nice, contains elements of the old flat tops, and the planning board recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen dash oh one with conditions one and two as identified in the staff report. And if you don't have the staff report in front of you, those conditions are, the following permit shall be issued prior to submittal of a building permit application. A, stormwater management permit as issued by NC DEQ. B, NC DOT encroachment agreement for work within the right-of-way of Highway one fifty-eight as issued by NC DOT. C, improvement permit and authorization to construct a new wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system as issued by NC HD and reviewed and approved by the NC DHHS. And D, review and approval of potable water distribution system modifications or extensions by the DC WD engineer. That was recommendation one in the staff report. Recommendation two, the applicant must strictly abide by all requirements of the town code and must also strictly comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal requirements. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Mr. Williams?
Not of Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
This time I'll ask our town attorney, Mr. Ben Gallop, to take on the public hearing for CUP eighteen zero one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public, quasi judicial public hearing on the conditional use permit application submitted by five four one five OBX LLC to open a drive-through facility or establishment small at five four one five Croatan Highway. The way this will work is we will have a brief presentation by Mr. Haskett, and the applicant will have an opportunity to question Mr. Haskett. Board will have an opportunity to question Mr. Haskett, after which we will have the applicant make their presentation, staff will have an opportunity, and the board will have an opportunity to question the applicant. Following that, the public will have an opportunity to testify to relevant competent testimony about the application and its ability to meet the standards for which it is applying to meet, and the staff, council, and applicant will have an opportunity to question the public members who do speak. Anyone who's wishing to testify to this, this is not like the legislative hearings before, this is, again, quasi judicial, so you must be sworn, so if you could come forward and let the clerks swear you in for providing factual testimony related to the application and whether or not it meets the standards for which it is applying. Does anyone wish to come forward and testify? Mr. Haskett?
I don't want to mention those names.
There's some other folks who have signed up for this to testify, Mr. Cusus, Mr. Weeks, and Mr. Gregory. Y'all not intend to testify, y'all have already had your say at the zoning or the public comment before the zoning hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next application on your agenda tonight is CUP eighteen oh one. The applicant is fifty-four fifteen OBX LLC. The applicant's representative is Michael Strater with Quible and Associates. The requested action is a conditional use permit application to construct a drive-through facility or establishment small. The location of the subject property is fifty-four fifteen North Croatan Highway. The current zoning is C General Commercial. The existing land use, as established by the town's land use plan, is commercial. With respect to the surrounding land use and zoning, to the north, it is commercial, C General Commercial District. To the south, it is Highway one fifty-eight, town of Kitty Hawk's jurisdiction, and to the east and west, it is commercial, C General Commercial Zoning District. Its physical characteristics are that it's vacant. The applicable regulations from the town code or the town zoning ordinance, Article Three, interpretation and definition of terms, Article Four, application of regulations, Article Six, general provisions, Article Seven, schedule of district regulations, and Article Ten, administration and enforcement. The applicant seeks a conditional use permit to construct a nine-hundred-and-ten-square-foot drive-through facility or establishment small at fifty-four fifteen North Croatan Highway. The proposed drive-through facility small is an ice cream shop, which includes a walk-up service area, drive-through service area, and twelve outdoor seats under a canopy. The proposed improvements incorporate pervious pavement as established in section thirty-six dash two-seven D five, and a landscaping buffer which contains Japanese black pines planted ten feet on center. A detailed lighting plan was also submitted, which demonstrates compliance with the town's lighting requirements. Obviously, a text amendment was submitted along with this application, which was just approved by council, allowing this to move, this request to move forward. Drive-through establishments, facilities, small, are allowed in the commercial zoning district now, provided that a conditional use permit is granted by the town council following a recommendation made by the town planning board. In granting any conditional use permit, U.S. council may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards that are in conformity with Article Ten, administration and enforcement. But before granting any conditional use permit, you, the town council, shall make the following affirmative findings. A, that the applicant has met the requirements of the applicable provisions of the town chapter pertaining to zoning, subdivision, and all other applicable ordinances. B, that the use as proposed will conform with the town's land use plan and will be compatible with the area in which it is to be located, if developed, in accordance with the conditions specified in the chapter and additionally required by the town council as authorized by the chapter which is zoning. Affirmative finding C is that the use will not materially endanger the public health and safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan submitted. And lastly, D, the final finding is that the use as proposed will not overburden the town volunteer fire department's firefighting capabilities and the county water supply capacity to the town, as said facilities and capabilities will exist on the completion date of the conditional use for which the application is made. Chairperson Williams hit on earlier that Chief Limbacher and Chief Cole, they both had an opportunity to review the site plan and they had no concerns. With respect to a recommendation, the land use plan identifies this area as commercial in the C General Commercial Zoning District, which is consistent with the improvements proposed in the application. All of the regulations of the town zoning ordinance and all of town staff's concerns that apply to this application have been identified or addressed in the recommended conditions. As Chairperson Williams noted, the town planning board unanimously recommended approval of the application, and he did note the conditions, I'll go through them one last time. Number one, that the following permits shall be issued prior to submittal of a building permit application. Those permits are, A, stormwater management permit as issued by NC DEQ. I was informed today by the applicant's representative that this permit was issued on May thirty-first, so this permit is in hand. B, NC DOT encroachment agreement for work within the right-of-way of Highway one fifty-eight as issued by NC DOT, which was also previously issued and was included in your packets. An improvement permit and authorization to construct a new wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system as issued by the Dare County Health Department and reviewed and approved by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And lastly, review and approval of potable water distribution system modifications or extensions by the Dare County Water Department engineer. Condition number two, that the applicant must strictly abide by all requirements of the town code and must also strictly comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal requirements. You received in your packets a copy of the staff report, the application, your project narrative, NC DOT right-of-way encroachment agreement, elevation drawings, and a full-size copy of the site plan. If you all have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them at this time. Sheila has most of those items available on the screen that we can take a look at, so if you all have any specific questions about those, I can try to answer them. If not, I'll have to defer to the applicant's representative, Mr. Strater. If you can, Sheila, bring up the, just the site plan, the first page of the site plan.
Mr. Haskett, does the application as presented...
Thank you.
...meet the standards that were recent, just recently adopted for the drive-through facility small?
Yes, sir, it does.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I have some questions for Mr. Strater.
Okay, he's coming next.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Tom?
No.
Okay. Does the applicant have any questions for Mr. Haskett? Thank you, Mr. Haskett.
Thank y'all.
I believe the town has anyone else who intends to testify. Mr. Strater, if you want to come up?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to just take a few minutes, again, to talk about myself and, you know, New Quality. Again, my name is Spiros Chianakopoulos, I live in Elizabeth City. My wife and I own a home here in Southern Shores and are members of the Southern Shores Civic Association. We love Southern Shores, we eventually plan on retiring here. New Quality's been a staple in Elizabeth City since the nineteen sixties, and we want to start a new tradition here. Like most businesses on the outer banks, we will be catering just as much, if not more, to the local residents of Southern Shores than to the tourists. There are better locations to attract tourists, but again, we love Southern Shores and we want to serve the residents here as well. We look forward to providing first-time jobs to high schools and college students of Southern Shores. In Elizabeth City, we have many more applicants than positions that are available. For the most part, our team members are hired at the age of sixteen and work until their second year of college. We currently give our employees the opportunity to come back each year before we do any new hires, and the majority of them, if not a hundred percent, come back every year because they do like it. When designing the building, we did put a lot of thought and energy into incorporating the history and character of the Southern Shores with the flat-top roof homes that are, you know, that's made Southern Shores famous and what they're known for. It was very important for us to do that. We have and will be making a significant investment in both time and money in order to bring a first-class building that reflects the history of the town it will be serving. And that being said, as I mentioned, you know, the proposed drive-through, without that, we wouldn't be able to do it, so again, thank you on that. We want to be an asset to this community. My wife and I, through our business and personally, have supported our community. Most of our focus is on our children and our school system. Just this week, at J C Store, we passed out free ice cream gift cards to all the students that took the EOGs. I've also been, like I told you before, in contact with Dr. Florence at Principal Kitty Hawk Elementary School about partnering up. We've already sponsored two small events there and look forward to doing much more in the future. He'll probably be one of my first calls if we do get approved. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. And I also have letters of support I've made for each council member. Can I pass those out, or...
They're really not.
Okay.
They're, for this hearing, what's really here is whether or not you meet the standards, whether the site plan and everything meet the standards for the ordinance, so it's really not relevant.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me ask if they have any questions for you.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Strater.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Strater. I'm an engineer with Quible and Associates, the civil engineer of record for the conditional use site plan amendment before you this evening. I appreciate the thorough staff report and review. As you're going into your deliberations, I won't duplicate the previous presentations, but I would just like to inform you that the application is in complete compliance with the town's development standards. We were very pleased with the positive feedback from both the police and fire departments regarding the improvements to public health and safety. I'm also glad to report to you that during the time that has lapsed, we have acquired all of the outstanding state, federal, local permits, including but not limited to the Dare County and Department of Health and Human Services wastewater on-site septic permit approval and authorization to construct, the state's stormwater permit, and the Department of Transportation driveway entrance and encroachment agreements. I'm glad to entertain any... Um, I'm glad to entertain any questions, technical questions that you might have.
Mr. Connors, you said you had a question?
Yes, I have three things for you. Uh, two of them are more comments. Um, one's a question. The first comment is, I noticed that you've got this, uh, site plan basically broken down into five different drawings, and I just wanted to comment how easy the drawings are to read. I wish more engineers out here on the Outer Banks broke it down like that. Um, I mean, I, I could go through it all, but you've got staking and, on one sheet, grading and drainage on another, details on another. It's very common out here to see all of that on one page, and it makes it very difficult for, um, people to read the drawings. But anyway, thank you for that. It, it's a very well-done set of drawings.
Appreciate it.
The second thing is more of a question. I noticed in reviewing your drawings that you're using porous concrete, permeable pavers, um, vegetated swales, and infiltration basins. Are these low-impact development concepts?
Absolutely.
Thank you, again, for that. Um, and the other, the final thing is just, uh, while you meet the code requirements for, by using Japanese black pines, I'd like to just suggest that you re-look at those plant species. I think, um, Japanese black pines may give you more problems down the road than benefits. And, um, I talked to, uh, Mr. Haskett, he can work with you on that. But then also, you could get somebody who's trained in plant selection, just to get, think about some other type of plants.
Sure.
That's not a requirement for approval here, that is just a suggestion.
That, that, point taken, I appreciate the feedback, and we'll work with, work with planning.
Okay, that's all I have for Mr. Strater.
I would, I would echo, uh, I have one quick question. I would echo, there's a comment, the same, similar to what, uh, Mr. Connors said about the, your plantings. The, the schematic or the, the diagram that we saw on the screen a few minutes ago allowed people to see the, see the building and see the structure from One Fifty-Eight or wherever they had vis, visibility to see it. Japanese black pines, if they grow to their normal s, that's not a Japanese black pine, that's some sort of shrub, but if the Japanese black pine grows its normal potential, which is fifteen to twenty feet high, wide, and, and, uh, and tall, you, you run the problem of, uh, blocking your actual roadway through there at some point in time. And, and you do limit the visibility of that structure and, and the facility from the highway, which if you plant something that tall across the front of it, just, once again, an observation that we can't, won't require that, but just something to think about. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald, did you have any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Strater.
All right, and, yeah, as long as the, the board, the council allows, we'll definitely work with planning on interchanging any species of plants. Be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Uh, were there any members of the public who were sworn, who wished to provide testimony at this hearing? I don't see any hands. Is in, anybody who wasn't sworn, who still wants to provide testimony and is willing to be sworn? Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this. Um, and I would point out to you that if someone wanted to make a motion to approve, uh, the application, that they would want to specifically make that motion to find the, affirmably find the findings that Mr. Haskett laid out, along with the, uh, recommended conditions that Mr. Haskett laid out. Um, if they wanted to deny, uh, make a motion to deny, they'll need to make specific findings about how they, uh, did not meet those standards, and if there are any other conditions, uh, those could be changed in a motion too. But if someone wishes to make a motion to approve, I could help with that language.
I'd like to make the, uh, motion to approve, and then ask for your help in that language.
I, I think you'd want to make a motion to approve, uh, noting that the, uh, findings required by the ordinance, as laid out Mister, by Mr. Haskett, are affirmatively found, and adopting the recommendations that staff have provided, both One A through D, and Two in the, um, staff report.
Now, rather than read all that, can I say yes?
You can say-
That's what I'm making the motion for?
So moved would be the typical-
So moved.
We have a motion to, uh, follow the, the town attorney's recommendation, uh, reference this, uh, this ETA, or, I'm sorry, uh, CUP. Do I have a second, council? I'll second the motion. Any other, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I would just call for the motion, the call for a motion, a motion to approve the, uh, CUP eighteen zero one, motion as, as made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Gary?
Brad, are you still down there?
Yeah.
I couldn't see it.
Thank you.
I didn't see it. Motion is made, and curious, Sheila, unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Item six, new business. Uh, excuse these folks a time, she has to get. Thank you.
This time, I'll call on our town manager, uh, Mr. Rasko, to present the, uh, once again, the budget ordinance for two thousand eighteen oh six oh one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, it's my duty tonight to review the filed budget, proposed budget for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, so that you can have a public hearing on the, uh, proposed budget and deliberate. Um, just to recap, the proposed budget was filed with the town clerk on May the first. It was emailed to the town, the proposed budget was emailed to the town council members on May one. It was reviewed at the council meeting of May one. It was placed on the town website after that council meeting on May the first. It was placed on the deck town bulletin boards, uh, the next day, on May the second, uh, and was available for public inspection, starting on that day. It was also advertised, uh, subsequent to that, um, in the Coastal Times newspaper, with the notice of public hearing on Tuesday, May the sixth, and Wednesday, May twenty-third. It was also placed in the town's, uh, email newsletter to citizens and residents on May the eleventh and May the twenty-fifth. It's also received coverage in numerous, um, newspapers, and both online and paper, as far as articles on the proposed budget. So to begin tonight, I just wanted to recap that this budget proposes no property tax increase in the town's current property tax rate of twenty-two cents per one hundred dollars of taxable property value. Uh, it is a balanced budget, as required by law. The town of Southern Shores continues to provide the most services with the smallest workforce at the lowest tax rate of any local government in Dare County. This proposed budget is balanced, projecting six million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and two dollars in revenues, to fund an equal amount of projected expenses to maintain the same level of services that this council has directed be provided to the citizens. At the time of the filing of this budget, the town remains debt-free, and maintains a healthy unassigned fund balance, as found by the town auditor in her annual audit. The proposed balanced budget, uh, contains certain highlights for this fiscal year, beginning on July one. It, um, contains proposals as directed by council as well, and going down the list of those for this year, uh, as highlights, this, uh, proposed budget establishes a new employee classification for deputy town manager, town planner, um, which is, would be effective on July first, two thousand eighteen. Uh, that directive by the council received unanimous approval by the council on February two thousand eighteen to be included in this projected budget. It also proposes construction of an East Dogwood Trail pedestrian path. Um, that received unanimous approval from the council on February twentieth, two thousand eighteen, to be directed, that it be directed to be placed in this proposed budget as well. The proposed budget also includes an increase in the annual appropriation for capital street improvements. It was, that was, uh, received unanimous approval on February twentieth, two thousand eighteen, and resulted in an increase in the, um, annual capital street improvement amount by a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. It also contains, uh, implementation of an architect's assessment for the town's facility needs. That expense was unanimously approved by the council on February twentieth, two thousand eighteen, and as directed, it was also placed in this proposed budget, and that, uh, projected expense is twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. It also includes a proposal to implement the coastal engineers' beach vulnerability study, um, originally with a survey of ninety-four thousand dollars, which on March the sixth, two thousand eighteen, the council directed by unanimous approval, and it, subsequent to that, on April seventeenth, the council unanimously voted to remove the survey portion of that expense of thirty-four thousand dollars, leaving a directed expense by the council of sixty thousand dollars for the coastal engineers' proposed vulnerability study. Those are items that the council directed be included in this proposed budget. And before I get to the departments, um, which show also, uh, salary expenses for the, for the, uh, departmental employees, as I reported at the, um, April seventeenth workshop, and also at the May first, uh, briefing on the filed budget, um, the proposed employee expenses for this year make up thirty-seven percent of the proposed budget, which is a, is the median of all Dare County municipalities. It will fund the smallest local government, uh, employed workforce in Dare County. In the following are the employees' position expenses, which are included with the proposed salary expenses. There's a cost of living adjustment of two point five percent, health insurance premium increase of four point five percent, the FICA contribution is seven point six five percent, retirement contribution for regular employees, which is mandatory at seven point seven five percent, retirement increase for law enforcement employees, which is mandatory at eight point five percent, employer 401K contribution for non-law employment, not, non-law enforcement employees of five percent, and employer 401 contribution for law enforcement employees, which is mandatory at five percent. It also, uh, contains the benefit that council has customarily provided its employees as a health insurance coverage offset in lieu of benefits, it's seven thousand, eight hundred dollars per employee, to cover employees' cost of providing healthcare for dependents. If I could, um, Sheila, go to the pie charts, please. The pie chart on the screen shows the general fund revenues for the town of Southern Shores, and just to highlight, the right side of the pie, shows that fifty percent of the town's budget is made up of ad valorem taxes, which are property taxes. So when we speak of going up on taxes or decreasing taxes, that only affects the ad valorem portion of the town's revenues. On the left side, you'll see thirty-five percent is funded by occupancy, sales tax, and land transfer tax, and those are the town's so-called tourism taxes. That funds, those taxes fund thirty-five percent. That comes from our visitors. The other items on the pie chart are the restricted revenues, unrestricted revenues, uh, the permits and fees, and the other revenues, as far as lease and rentals, the three percent, um, two percent, three percent, and seven percent. The breakdown of the occupancy, sales, and land transfer tax, which is the town's tourism taxes, at thirty-five percent of its entire budget, you can see that the occupancy tax is the largest. It makes up forty-five percent of that thirty-five percent pie, almost a million dollars, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars, and that's Southern Shore's share of visitation rentals. On the left side of that pie chart, the local option sales tax makes up forty-four percent. We get nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty out of that. And then the land transfer tax makes up eleven percent of the thirty-five percent pie, at two hundred and thirty thousand, four thirty-seven. The expenditure, pie, um, you can see that the, excuse me. The bottom right corner, the police department, is the largest department in the town's budget. It makes up twenty-seven percent of the town's expenditures. Um, streets, bridges, and canals, uh, to the left of that, make up eighteen percent. The public works department is eight percent, sanitation services, eleven percent, uh, fire services, thirteen percent, our ocean rescue, two percent, and the admin department at sixteen percent. And if we can go to the lines. And as far as the general fund summary page that has been put out in the proposed budget, you see, uh, in the top portion of this are the town's revenues, that we've gone over with the pie, making up six million, three fifty-five, four oh two, in the total line there on the top half. The bottom half are the expenditures, that we just went over by percentage, um, making up the equalling balanced portion of six million, three fifty-five, four oh two. On the bottom-left corner, shows the computation of one penny of revenue, one penny of tax rate equals one hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars for the town revenue. Again, um, the next page, the general fund revenues, which we've already gone over by percentage, the ad valorem taxes for the town of Southern Shores are three million, thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. And the tourism visitor taxes there, occupancy, sales, and land transfer tax, uh, is two million, one twenty-nine, five thirty-nine, is what is projected. The remaining amounts on this page are the unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, which are the taxes, uh, on, uh, franchises, et cetera, that the General Assembly provides for the town's, uh, cut out of those particular, um, enterprises, totaling four twenty-six, six twenty-two. And then the restricted revenues coming from various, um, appropriations for the state, as well as, um, proposed grants, that hopefully will be, um, will get in, totals two oh five, two sixty-four. Uh, we'll call your attention to the last two items in that column, the Government Access Channel Grant, which we consistently get, ten thousand a year, and the Shoreline Stabilization Grant, which comes from the county, from the, um, occupancy tax of twenty-four thousand dollars, which we use for beach plantings each year. Continuing on the next page for revenues, projected revenues, um, permits and fees, you can see there total a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars projected. Under other revenues, you'll see the various others, such as interest, rental miscellaneous, and small grants. Um, I will call your attention to the last grant from the Dare County Tourism Bureau, one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, is specifically for your East Dogwood walking path. If that is approved tonight, then that would be, um, that would go towards that particular project. So other revenues total a hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars, with the total, um, revenues of three million, other revenues of three million, fifty-nine, oh twenty-five, which would bring, um, the total of all to six million, three fifty-five, four oh two to balance this budget. Uh, a glimpse again at the department, uh, ex- A glimpse again at the department expenses that we went over last meeting and also in your budget workshop, which did not change that much. You will see, beginning at the top, the salaries, the employee benefits, the computers, the computer services in the admin department, all the various admin functions that are carried out, including training, subscriptions, as well as the government access channel expenses and the publishing of the code, vehicle operations, contracted services, et cetera, and all the various functions here in the pit center, which totals $1,7,163 for the percentage that was shown on the pie chart at 16%. Under projected planning and code enforcement, you can see a total of $300,472. I will call your attention to the next to the last item, Town Code Update. Recall, the last two meetings, I've called your attention to the fact that there are two items of legally obligated amounts that the town will not spend all of it by the end of this fiscal year. One of those is the Town Code Update. The other is architectural fees that you authorized for the fire department's architectural services. Those items, since they're legally obligated, would need, will roll back into unassigned fund balance midnight on June 30, and we will need at the first meeting of July to roll those back into the budget by a budget amendment. So that is one of those, and that's why it's blank, the remaining funds for the Town Code Update. Going on to the departmental budget for the Police Department, you can see this is the largest of the town's departments, the various operations of the Police Department, including some minor grants that the chief applies for every year at the end. I'll also call your attention to the capital outlay for vehicles. This continues our practice of rotating two vehicles per year as necessary. The total, including the separation allowance, which must be transferred to the pension fund, is $1,692,147 at the bottom.
Peter, I remind you that we also bring a bunch of minutes for the, when their vehicles have come out on the beach here.
Yes, thank you, Bonnie. The finance officer's reminded me, since the last meeting, we've have, we're doing work on one of the vehicles. By auditing standards, it will not be finished by June 30 and will not be delivered by June 30, so that's a third item that will need to be rolled over into next, into the budget subsequent to June 30 as well. Thank you. The next, next page is the streets, bridges, and canals, which is departmentalized by auditing standards for the Town of Southern Shores as a separate department. This basically shows the maintenance and capital outlay for these particular infrastructure items. We'll call your attention to the sixth line down, beach profile study. The $60,000 is what the council directed be, be projected for this particular item. So there's that one. Following down from that, you'll see the East Dogwood Bike Path at $250,000 that's directed by the council. And below that, you'll see the FY 18-19 Infrastructure Project projections of $654,870. That includes the increased amount directed by the council to be placed in this particular budget, the $138,000 increase. As practiced by the town, that, that amount will not be appropriated or approved for appropriation until you accept and approve a capital infrastructure improvement plan in July. Once you approve that plan, then that amount would go towards implementing that plan for the year. The total for this particular department there at the bottom is $1,123,597. The next page is your Public Works Department. This gives the actual amounts projected for the expense of the actual department's employees and the department's equipment and some of the minor operations for the department during the year. We'll call your attention to the, down at the bottom, third line up, Shoreline Stabilization, $24,000. We get that each year from the occupancy tax beach nourishment fund from the county. And then also, the last line is the facilities assessment of $26,370, which was directed by the council to be projected for this year as well, totaling $546,444 for that particular Next is your sanitation services for the town. This includes the residential trash pickup, recycling trash pickup, the trash disposal, which is your landfill tipping fee, and also the expense of two large item pickups. And it also includes, the last line, I would say, is the town's most popular service, the lemon branch removal service. You can see a slight increase in that particular amount this year, and that's because of, we had deferred some capital, excuse me, some CIP increases, and now that is at $130,000. So the total sanitation services for the Town of Southern Shores projected is $688,465. The next page is our Fire Services page, projected budget for this year. The contract fire protection is at $545,914. And recall that the, what was reviewed with you was the fire department's budget, which included a proposed increase of $60,000 to cover the employment of the deputy chief, which Chief Limbacher has brought to our attention on numerous occasions and also included in his proposed budget. So that's at $545,914. The next line is $267,700, and that is an anticipation line in the case that the council, at some point during FY 18-19 approves participation in the development of a new station, it would anticipate closing of a loan midway during the year for construction, and it would cover, projected, is projected to cover debt service for a portion of the, of the year. So if you chuck, excuse me.
Can I ask a question on that line?
Go ahead.
Just that, that line is labeled architectural services. I think that, is that because in this calendar year, we're covering the architectural services, but the next year that would go, that's purely debt service?
That's purely debt service regardless of the term architectural services. Yes. Yes, sir.
Do you need to change that? Because you're going to have that architectural carryover.
We'll look at that as far as relabeling.
And there may be other architectural, like, construction-related services.
Is there a carryover?
Yes, exactly.
All right, so the total for the Fire Department Services for the year is projected at $813,614. And I do, as, as we, y'all have brought up that point, any more appropriation of funds for debt service, again, would need to be voted on by you again. Recall that we're going to bring to you the design, the Fire Department's going to bring to you the design of a new station, and also is going to bring to you bids for financing and construction. So there'll be many, several more bites at the apple before you authorize that amount to be spent.
So this is, right now, it's a budget number?
That's right.
For that first year, anticipated first year of financing, should we decide to go forward?
Correct. You'll have many more times when you'll approve expenditure of that.
That's to cover half a year.
That is projected to cover a half a year if we, if you chose to do that and we close mid-year, yes.
Because it would double that, more or less, to make a annual payment.
We're making an assumption layer on that, a very large assumption, because we haven't put it out for bid or proposal yet for financing, because we don't know a construction number, a final number.
But given the timeline, you're not going to give bids till probably about
That's right, it won't be till late, late in the calendar year, so. That would total Fire Services for the year, $813,614. The next, the next page is Ocean Rescue Services. That stays the same, slight increase, excuse me, slight increase at $163,500. That covers the Ocean Rescue Services that basically have just begun, and now would go into the early fall. That ends the town's general fund budget, and now we go to the second budget, the, excuse me, the budget of the second fund of the town, which is the Cemetery Fund. And you can see that the Cemetery Fund is, has a very limited budget, basically projects sale of cemetery lots and also one expense for software licensing. We do not, not run in a half salary through the Cemetery Fund this year, so that's why it is a limited amount. You can see the balance of the Cemetery Fund as of last year at the audited period of $56,718 was what was in the bank, in, in the piggy bank for the Cemetery Fund. The next sheet is the budget for the town's third fund, which is the Capital Reserve Fund. And all of these three funds, again, bear in mind, make, make up the town's unassigned fund balance, so this is one of three funds that make up the total of the unassigned fund balance. This is the Capital Reserve Fund, and it shows you a budget for this year of $282,828. So the top, the top half of this sheet shows you the actual budget. It shows you revenues coming in from unassigned fund balance, and it shows you expenses going out for two items. One is the channel and canal maintenance, and also a transfer to the general fund for $262,828 to go towards capital improvements. And that is what is projected, and of course, your Capital Reserve Fund can only be used for capital items, capital infrastructure items by state law. The bottom portion of the page shows you the history for this year and balances, beginning at the balance as of March 31, 2018, the Capital Reserve Fund had a balance of $225,607. Reserved out of that for canal maintenance, a sub-line out of that for canal maintenance was $58,792. And on April 3 of this year, 2018, the council approved a transfer of unspent money, capital money, from the current year's budget into the Capital Reserve Fund to be used for projects for which it was established and maintained of $195,000. So the balance for other capital projects, not the canals, was $361,815 prior to this projected budget. Over on the right side in the red, you'll see, in parentheses, the amount that's proposed that you transfer into the current, the general fund to take care of capital projects, $282,828 in the red. And right below that will be the balance, if you approve that, then right below that is the balance, after that transfer of $78,987 would be what would be left in the Capital Reserve Fund. Again, not to be confused with the unassigned fund balance. All these funds make up the unassigned fund balance. I just wanted to remind council again of the process we'll have to go through in July for the three items. One is the police vehicle that's, repairs are undelivered. The other is the fire department's architectural fees that are unspent, and the town code rewrite project, which still is legally obligated and not to be, has not been spent yet. So those three items will be rollovers projected in July. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that y'all go, the council go to public hearing, and then we can answer any questions after that.
Thank you, Peter. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll open a public hearing on the proposed FY 18-19 operating budget and consideration of the same. The only person that have signed up currently is Mr. Van Geest.
Peter answered my question. The mayor attended his presentation with the Capital Reserve Fund hearing, so I don't have any.
Thank you. Mr. Van Geest indicated that Mr. Rasko had answered his question about the Capital Reserve Fund and fund balance, I believe. Does anyone else, having heard Peter's presentation, having not signed up, anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing for the FY 18-19 operating budget? If you could raise your hand very high. Ms. Scherzma?
Scherzma. May I get it from here?
No.
No.
We need to have you on the recording, which is, it's only going to pick up if you go to the microphone.
And it piggybacks with what Mr. Van Geest was saying, because I am not clear on this. Ann Scherzma, 69 Hickory Trail. Mr. Rasko, could you explain again for me? I honestly am confused at this point. I thought I had it straight, having talked with Bonnie. You just said all these funds make up the unassigned fund balance. Which are all these funds?
Mr. Mayor, you want any dialogue with the speaker?
Yes, Peter, if you can answer that question.
All these funds are the general fund, the Capital Reserve Fund, and the Cemetery Fund, those three.
I was under the impression that each one had its own unassigned fund.
It does, in theory. It makes up the entire, the town's entire unassigned fund balance.
So the funds that were transferred from the Capital Reserve Fund to the general fund, $282,000.
They are projected to be transferred.
Projected to be transferred. Are they going to be used exclusively for capital projects?
Yes, ma'am, by state, as I said, by state law, they have to be.
They have to be. So was that designated in this budget where those funds went?
Yes.
It's in?
That's correct. It makes up, well, they're not designated by project, no. They're designated to go into capital projects as required by state laws. So they would offset the amount in the streets, canals, and bridges department that are designated for capital projects.
So when you, the initial budget showed, quote-unquote, a shortfall of $260-some-thousand?
No, ma'am, there was no initial budget.
Well, there was an unbalance.
There was no initial, there was no initial budget, there was no preliminary budget. All I brought to the council at its, excuse me, all I brought to the council at its workshop were projected expenses and projected revenues at that time.
I'm not criticizing or trying to pin anything out.
That was not a preliminary budget.
I'm just trying to understand it better.
And I'll be glad to meet with you tomorrow and explain it to you more.
That's a very generous offer. I don't have any real problem, just a concept question.
I understand.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this year's operating budget? You'll get a chance to speak after. Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, wishing to speak at the public hearing, I'll close the public hearing and give it back to you.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you. Start with a motion to, to adopt. The ordinance is Southern Shores Town Council adopting a budget and tax rate fiscal year 2018, 2019. I make such a motion, I make that motion.
I think Mr. Connor has questions. I thought Mr. Connor had questions.
He can ask his question, once the motion's made and seconded, he can ask his question.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. You have a question?
Only that I wanted to reiterate what Mr. Rasko just said, that the first time he gave us numbers, it was not a proposed budget.
I know the budget.
I'm not, it was not a proposed budget. It was a listing of projected revenue versus a listing, versus expenses that council had voted on. So it was not a proposed budget. That's the only thing that I want to say.
Thank you.
It's been reported as a proposed budget, and Mr. Rasko was not ready to explain the budget. It's been very erroneously reported in various ways, but that was not a proposed budget.
Any other comments, council?
Yeah, I've got a question for the town manager. I noticed for the Fire Department, you, I guess, projected some debt service for half of next year, assuming to go under contract. How do you propose, where's the, where are the funds coming from to service the debt, assuming we were to vote on a new Fire Department and we went to the banks and got a loan? How are we going to service that debt? Where's the money coming from?
The money is coming from the revenues that we just showed you as being projected. The money is coming from the revenues that we just showed you as being projected. It's part of this year's, uh, budget.
Yeah, but what I'm-
That money would come from-
What I'm saying is for future years, I understand where it's coming from for this year, but how about in the future?
That's something we'll have to ten, uh, tend to next spring. If it doubles in size, then that's my job to, uh, work with you to, uh, come up, so that I can come up with a proposed budget at the end of next year during budget season.
'Cause we can't keep taking money out of the reserve funds. I mean, it, we'll deplete it sooner or later.
You're right. Yes, sir, I understand that.
It sounds to me like we've gotta either have increased revenues, which doubtful that we'll get that much increase based on the history. So do we start trimming our budget and trying to save money, or do we increase taxes?
That is up to the council. That's a function of this council. If you want to direct me to reduce the services of the town, to trim the budget, that's up to the, the council, or if you want to increase revenues, that's up to the council.
Okay.
That's something certainly we'll have, you'll have to decide for next year, because you're right, we can't pull any more money out of capital reserve, because that's only seventy thousand dollars left in it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Anything, Chris?
Um, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll agree with Fred that, that that's a fair point. But I also appreciate that Peter's dealt with this half a year in the meantime to cover this fiscal year. But that's gonna be a tough, tough discussion, and we're gonna have to, to make those hard choices.
Yeah.
But it is, will, it will be in next year's, um, decision-making process, 'cause we're not sure if we're even going forward yet, so.
Yeah.
While it's good we're thinking about it, um, I think it's the next, the next big step, next year.
Anything, Gary?
Yes, sir. Uh, Peter, on the streets, bridges, and canals, I don't see the Yopon bulkhead rollover. We didn't complete that project this year.
You did not.
And that was-
Is that the one ninety-five?
Hundred and ninety-five.
Correct.
So where is that in our next year's capital projects?
That, that amount of rollover went to into the capital reserve fund as you voted.
Right.
And then it wa- it's projected to be pulled out of the capital reserve fund to go against, um, that's figure six fifty-four eight seventy, which includes all the projects that you'll consider in July, which one of them is Yopon. And so if you adopt that project, it would be funded by that six fifty-four eight seventy.
But is that not reducing our capital projects, which we directed that it increased this year by doing a last year's project next year and not roll, we rolled that money over for that bulkhead?
No, you rolled the money into, I would respectfully have to disagree with, with that. You rolled the money into the capital reserve fund for projects for which the fund was established. It was not designated earmarked, specified for any particular project. I did report to you that it was from that fund, uh, excuse me, from that project that was not spent for this year.
The way-
So it was rolled into the capital reserve fund, and there it sat, and now I'm projecting to you that you spend that for a project for next year, which hopefully you'll adopt as one of which would be Yopon to continue.
So in essence, we're a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars short, because we're doing a less, one less project than we had planned to do.
You making that statement, I'm not, I don't see where you're short, a hundred and ninety-five-thousand dollars. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
When we did that rollover, we said we'd start Yopon back in October, and that's why we put it into the capital reserve, so we could immediately go do it instead of putting it into the unassigned fund balance.
I beg to differ. You voted to put the money into capital reserve fund.
Well, but it would've rolled over anyway into the unassigned fund balance at the end, had we left it there, so.
That's right, but you still would've had to adopt any unfinished projects in July.
Well, one thing I, I'm noticing, I just did some quick math, to your point, yes, that, that one ninety-five came, you know, specifically from Yopon, went to capital reserve, but then we went ahead and increased the appropriations for capital improvements to one thirty-eight, so that-
We did.
That de- that delta's about fifty, roughly fifty-four thousand, um, but we, it, so we're, we actually put that money back in there. And then I would also say that, um, we're also spending sixty thousand on the beach survey, which may not be capital improvements, but it, it matches it. And then the other piece was that we're spending two-hundred-and-fifty thousand on the bike path, which is capital improvements. So kind of, if you include the ca- if you include the bike path in the capital improvements, which I would personally-
Which we didn't.
Well, not, just because it's specific to the project.
That's right.
But, but you're, but if you put those together, we're spending a good deal more. We're spending, um, over two-hundred thousand dollars in there. Um, and I, and, and that's a pretty, I think it's a good investment, I think it's worthwhile.
I understand your defense of that, but the bottom line is, we're using money that was designated for a specific project. We moved it to the capital fund so we could start back in October.
Right.
When the permits allow, the turtles go away, or the fish go away, whatever, and now we're pulling that to balance our budget.
You want to address that?
Uh, yeah, I would again say, you're not using money that was designated by this council for a specific project. The council designated it for capital reserve fund.
I think if you go back and look-
I did.
We, we talked about this project-
You did talk about that.
And putting that project money in there to do in October and move it forward, 'cause you couldn't do it this fiscal year, based on the permits.
You did do a lot of talking about that, yes, sir, and that's why the capital improve, infrastructure improvement committee has the Yopon as one of its recommendations, but you did not specifically specify that this go into a sub-fund of the capital reserve fund.
You can do the oranges and apples all day.
Oh, I, I will, because the, the auditor will correct me if I don't. She will flag me if I don't.
Is there anything saying we won't do Yopons here? I mean-
Well, we, we have, we need to do it, it's three years in the making.
Yeah.
You would consider that in July, yes, sir, that'll come to you in July to make that decision.
It just reduces the other capital projects we can do.
I, I hear you, but we're also putting it, uh, uh, we're putting a chunk in the bike paths.
No, we, we have a, a deficit, we're covering it with something, we can take it out of the unassigned fund balance and do the same thing.
Okay. I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's my recommendation to the council. The council does not have to accept my recommendation for, for the balanced budget.
Thank you, Peter.
I, I'd like to amend your motion, Tom.
Go ahead.
I'd like to put that hundred and ninety-five thousand use specifically for that Yopon bulkhead, and then he can, direct him to pull it out of the unassigned fu- fund balance to balance his budget.
I'm, I'm confused on what you want. I, I, I think we, we got it covered, regardless how we do it, it's covered for it. So I don't understand what the reason for the amendment is.
Well, we're basically two sets short, and we're using project money to balancing budget, which is, in, in essence, we're gonna be a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars short of projects that we can do next year.
Do you want to address that, Peter? I don't, I don't, I don't-
Totally lost, yes, sir.
But we, but we increased the budget, but we increased the budget by a hundred and thirty-four, so.
And, and now we're reducing it because we-
But the delta's only fifty-four thousand by that, by your same math, so at the, at the very least, that's the delta, because we put it back in the same fund to use for the same project. That, that's what I'm saying, and then we put, and it's still not balanced. But the, the budget is balanced, I mean, that, that's clear, but if anything, you could argue that the budget's not balanced because of other things. There's a fifty-four thousand dollar difference because of other things, like the hiring the architect to do the study. You know, what's that, thirty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, there's that, that's, that's thirty thousand. Then there's a bunch of other line items that we added, and they're all good things, like the, the, the risk assessment. That's sixty in it, in itself.
This is in the capital.
So that would cover it.
This was in the capital fund, and has to go for capital projects.
And, and I don't think he's suggesting differently, though.
And it was already pla- it was placed in there for a purpose.
But, but I, but I don't, respectfully, I, he put it back in the capital account, tying it up once again for capital projects, and he put it back in the capital project, so it, this is a loop.
But if it's in capital, he can use it for that, in addition to our budget, that much more to work other projects.
I, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
You understand that.
But I also-
I know you just disagree.
I disagree, yeah, but it's not-
That's fine.
If we were to put that back, though, what other services would you want to cut in order to balance the budget?
Well, we could've done that in May if we had known where we were going.
But we're not in May now, but if we were to put that one seventy-five back, what would you want to cut?
The difference is only fifty-four thousand.
I would, I would vote for just leaving it the, the budget as it is, and let's adopt it.
That's the motion, that's the motion on the floor to adopt ordinance number two-zero-one-eight-dash-zero-six-dash-zero-one. It's been seconded. We've had some discussion about it. Uh, the motion, the motion's out there, been seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion before I ask for a vote? All in favor of adopting the ordinance number two-oh-eight, two-oh-eight oh-six oh-one, council? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, red aye. Carrie, did you vote? You, you voted nay?
I voted nay.
Okay. Sheila, motion was made, carried, I voted four to one. Let me go back to the agenda here for just a second. At this time, we'll have a public hearing, uh, on the zoning text amendment eighteen-zero-six. A zoning text amendment application submitted by the town of Southern Shores to amend the Southern Shores Town Code by amending section thirty-six one-seventy-five wireless communication sites, telecommunications sites, facilities and towers. I'll turn the meeting over to Mr., to our town attorney, Mr. Gallup.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sheila, do we have a sign-up sheet for this one? This is gonna be another legislative public hearing on ZTA eighteen oh-six zoning text amendment applications submitted by the town to amend section thirty-six dash one five, one-seventy-five wireless telecommunications sites, facilities, and towers. Uh, the first thing we'll do is we'll hear, uh, the planning board recommendation from Sam, and then we will have a presentation by Mr. Haskett, and then anyone who's signed up, uh, will have an opportunity to speak. And I will probably ask again, as I have the last couple times, if there's anyone else would like to speak in the public to this matter. So, Sam?
Uh, this ZTA, uh, eighteen dash oh-six was submitted by the town, and as a bit of background, uh, back in March, um, there was a related ZTA eighteen dash oh-two that, uh, was, the state had mandated, uh, changes to the small wireless facility requirements that towns had to have, and it greatly limited the town's ability to regulate small wireless facility. However, in that language, the town has some, uh, things that they have control over. It's, it's, it's not very much, but they are public safety and reasonable spacing, uh, of, of poles, design standards for decorative, decorative utility poles, stealth and concealment standards, and historic preservation standards. Uh, this ZTA eighteen dash oh-six is, addresses those items that the town has some control over. Uh, the planning board felt that with few exceptions, the changes presented, uh, were, were good, and if you look on the ZTA, uh, itself, the ones that you probably have, uh, is, uh, on page three of six, item D, uh, those, those items, uh, were the ones that were proposed by the town and the planning board with just, uh, I think, one change, thought they were, thought they were, they were good, and that, uh, that change was in, uh, D two, uh, where, uh, the planning board recommended that in, not just, uh, the location of these poles in front of residential structures, but also taking into account vacant lots. Uh, the other thing that the planning board did was discuss the screening of these poles, particularly those ones that have co-located facilities. Some of those can be pretty ugly, and we asked the staff to go back and research the screening of these poles, um, and so we don't have that report back from, from staff, but that will be coming before you at some point in the future. Uh, the planning board found the ZTA eighteen dash oh-six to be consistent with the land use plan and recommends approval of the ZTA eighteen oh-six as amended. Uh, are there any questions?
Any questions, sir? Sam?
I have none.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hask?
Thank you again, Ben, mayor, members of council. The next, uh, application on the agenda tonight is ZTA dash eighteen oh-six. The applicant is the town of Southern Shores, and the requested action is amendment of the town zoning ordinance by amending section thirty-six dash one-seventy-five wireless telecommunications sites, facilities, and towers. Um, town staff is proposing these amendments by amending section thirty-six dash one-seventy-five by adding additional regulations to address the placement of new utility poles used for attaching small cell wireless facilities, and this is being done as directed by council, or recommended, rather. Uh, the proposed amendments include the following additional regulations. Number one, no new utility pole may be installed for the principal use of wireless facilities if a pole exists within twenty feet of a desired location. Number two, the minimum distance of a new pole from any residential structure shall be at least one-hundred-and-fifty percent of the pole height, and shall not be located directly in front of any residential structure or vacant lot located in a residential zoning district. And for reference, um, one-hundred-and-fifty percent of a forty-foot pole would be sixty feet, so that would be what the setback is. Along, uh, number three, along streets and within subdivisions where there are no, no existing utility poles, wireless facilities may be attached to streetlights in the public right-of-way. Um, and number four, new poles may not be erected in a residential area solely for wireless communication equipment, unless the applicant has demonstrated it cannot reasonably provide service by the following three items: installing poles outside of the residential area, attaching equipment to existing poles within the right-of-way, or, uh, installing poles in rights-of-way not contiguous to parcels used for single-family residential purposes. Um, the town's currently adopted land use plan contains, uh, policy two, uh, which applies to the zoning text amendment, and, uh, town staff and the town planning board have recommended that the proposed amendment is consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan, and the, as Chairperson Williams reported earlier, the town planning board recommended approval of this application five zero. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time. As he also noted, uh, we did state where the planning board did discuss and, uh, request that staff look into, uh, additional regulations as far as aesthetics and screening go. Um, we'd be glad, staff would be glad to do that if council, um, desires to do so, but we felt it was important to go ahead and get these regulations in front of you instead of waiting until we looked for additional regulations that addressed aesthetic or screening issues. So, if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hask?
I have a question.
Mr. Mayor?
We, we discussed this earlier, in fact, it's a previous meeting we talked about.
Yes, sir.
What we can do, what we can't do, as far as controlling or trying to restrict or, or give guidelines to this particular type of, um, of system. Are, are we, is there any danger of overstepping our bounds, sure, with some of these things you've recommended, or is it a cha- is it a chance we should take?
These requirements were taken, um, from a NC Plan listserv inquiry I posted on the listserv. These requirements were provided by the town of Matthews, which is somewhat outside of Charlotte. Um, the planner who provided them said that the, uh, requirements had been in place. Well, obviously, the legislation didn't come into place till last year, but they have been in place for a small amount of time, but they had received some pushback from wireless providers. However, there had not been any challenges. Um, but as to whether or not there are any legitimate challenges, I don't know.
Just put it out there and find out, I guess, that's all we can do.
That's all I can say at this point with respect to the language.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions?
Wes, do, do the homeowner associations have any leeway or control in this?
I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure. I, I don't know, I would have to-
You said Matthews, and I know how they are. You said Matthews, and I know how they are.
The town of Matthews. I really don't know how covenants may apply to wireless facilities. That's a good point. You may want to check with either the applicable association. I don't know.
I mean, we have two associations that have restricted covenants.
My only thought would be that, I mean, the development that's being proposed mostly, we're talking about in the town right of way. So, I'm not sure that the covenants would apply in those situations, but where small cell wireless facilities are proposed on private property, they may come into play. That's just my opinion.
Anyone else have any? Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I think the root of what you're getting at is, does the wireless have to submit for a covenant review?
What power do they have? State and federal, federal regulates this mostly.
Interesting question.
I don't know.
Wes, are you comfortable with the language as written and as developed in conjunction with the planning board?
Yes, sir. And if you'd like, again, if you all would like us to look into additional regulations as far as aesthetics and screening goes, we can do that. My personal opinion on it is the facilities that I've seen, your equipment is up top, high up on the pole. The antenna is on the top. There's a cabinet down below. It would have to be high screening to screen everything on that pole. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but that's just one thought. The facilities that I've seen and the applications we've received, most of your equipment is well above ground, ground level.
But they have them that are encased within the pole, and it's only an antenna at the top.
There's the antenna, there's a cabinet that's about a quarter of the way up or so.
And the equipment is concealed within the pole, and that pole's not that. I've seen them both.
Yes.
Those are much more attractive than the others are just...
Yes, sir.
You know what you're looking at.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Now, I'll open the hearing to the public. And Mr. Berry, you're the only person signed up currently.
Thanks. I haven't glanced at some of the regulation. It appears it's mostly addressing on the right of way. And I implore you to make sure that you leave an option for the communications company to deal with a homeowner. For example, a civic association, private entity, has a cell tower on their property. So, individuals with a relationship with the cell provider might be able to gain some resources from the company for having a tower on their property. So, I just think we should have an option in the regulations that allow the cell tower provider to deal with a homeowner. Now, you talked also about the antenna on the top, but you're going to need to put utilities in the ground. It's going to take power, it's going to take a combine. So, there'll be trenches that have to be made. So, the homeowners have power already. That may be trench work that doesn't have to happen. So, I'm just trying to say, why does it have to happen on the town right of way? Let's leave it open so that the telecommunications can deal with a homeowner to put the cell tower on their property. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Does anyone else in the public wish to speak to this ZTA? Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. A question for you, Wes. What are the complications involved in doing something like Mr. Berry proposed? In other words, do we have the authority to actually allow them to do that?
We do. The ordinance that is originally written allows for small cell wireless facilities on private property. And the only requirement that we have outside of, well, one of the requirements if it's proposed on private property is that you must have, the provider must provide permission from the private property owner. We've received one application that is on private property. The property owner contacting me stated that they were offering a greatly, or rather low price for what she would be willing to agree to. So, there are negotiations about that, but it is possible. Yes, sir.
We can do that right now. We haven't got to change anything to make that can still happen.
Right now, wireless provider could go to Mr. Berry and ask him to put facilities on his property. If he agreed to it and it met all other requirements in the town, the ordinance, then he would be allowed to do so.
And HOA.
Subject to HOA, yes, sir. I'm not sure about that, the covenants.
They have to be changed at the HOA level, but right?
I can't speak for that.
I mean, we allow it. If the HOA does not allow it, we have no control over it.
That's correct. We're separate entities. We don't have any influence on the HOA's covenants.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir.
More motion?
Yeah.
You want a motion?
I do.
I make a motion. We accept ZTA 1806 as written and present it to the town, to the council.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, council? The motion's been made and seconded to handle ZTA 1806. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion's made and carried.
Thank you, Wes.
This time, we'll open another public hearing, ZTA 1807. A zoning text amendment application submitted by the town of Southern Shores to amend the Southern Shores Town Code by amending section 36-132 Regulation of Structures and Uses Nonconforming. I'll ask once again our town planner for his comments. I'm sorry, our planning board chairman, I apologize. Where are you at tonight, Sam? I'm sorry.
Well, Wes and I look a lot alike. We're both handsome young men. It's easy to get us confused. ZTA 18-07 was submitted by the town. And as a way of background, there are many nonconforming 50-foot wide lots in existence in the town. And you don't realize how many there are until you pull up some of the information on the GIS, and so you can see them. Many of the residential structures that are in these areas are built on two or more 50-foot wide lots, and they were never recombined. In the last year and a half or so, we've had four variance requests to reduce side yard setbacks on these 50-foot wide lots. And I expect, even though there's only about 10 or 12 undeveloped 50-foot wide lots, that as redevelopment takes place, I expect that we are going to get more and more requests for reducing the side yard setbacks. And the ones that we've dealt with, we, the planning board, have dealt with. The first one was in relationship to the event house. And one of the owners of adjacent lots had bought the 50-foot wide lot and then came in for a variance for the side yard setback. The second one was the duplex that was sitting just north of the Chickahaw Light on the west side. And there was a complex situation there on ownership because of the way they built the duplex, they jointly owned the duplex and the lots, and all that had to be sorted out. And once it got sorted out, it was two 50-foot wide lots that were developed. Then over on Ocean Boulevard, there was a house that was built in 1957 that was mostly on one lot, but partially on an adjacent lot. And those lots were owned by two different entities, and they were working in conjunction with each other, and they too requested a reduction in the side yard setback. And the last one that came to the planning board was for a lot at 85A Ocean Boulevard. And it was a request just to reduce the side yard setback to 10 feet, and the planning board rejected that request. I think it's generally recognized that the development or redevelopment of these 50-foot wide lots would change the character of that part of the town that's over on the east side near the ocean and then a few streets back. That's not to say that those are the only nonconforming lots. There are a few over on the Sound on North Dogwood. There are three lots there that were platted as separate lots, and they've never been combined. And it's, you know, just three separate lots next to each other. The other thing to consider is that in the land use plan, in the vision statement, it talks about wanting small, low-density neighborhoods, wanting single-family homes primarily on large lots, that's at least 20,000 square feet. It wants the scale and architecture of new development and redevelopment being compatible with existing homes. And it wants desired plan for the future is to maintain the existing community appearance and form. This situation, if you look at the land use plan, you look at the development and redevelopment of these 50-foot wide lots, there's a conflict there. And the town council had directed staff to develop this ZTA in an attempt to resolve some of this conflict. The major components of this ZTA, two of them is that orphan 50-foot wide lots can be developed with 12-foot side yard setbacks. And adjacent 50-foot wide lots under the same ownership must be combined. And that's even prior to the sale or transfer of lots. Before that happens, it must be combined. I know that the planning board feels that, again, that Ben and Wes did a good job in putting this draft ZTA together. I expect that there is going to be some negative feedback simply because folks that have three 50-foot wide lots, they've got a house on two of those, and they want to do something with the third lot. The way this ZTA is written, they would have to combine those lots at some point, which would go towards the vision in the land use plan. The planning board found the ZTA 18-07 to be consistent with the land use plan and recommends approval of ZTA 18-07 as amended. Are there any questions?
Yes. At the very beginning of your presentation, you said there were about 10 to 12 50-foot wide lots. Are those isolated lots with no development on them?
I don't know. I don't know.
Because my understanding is there's a whole boatload of 50-foot wide lots out there, but they've got one house on two of them, and that's what this...
On two or three of them, yes.
Right. And that's what this is, what we're trying to address tonight.
And the situation is that as these lots are sold or redeveloped, that right now you can go in and take two of these lots that one house may be on, or two lots that happen to be vacant next to each other, and sell them as separate lots and develop them as separate lots.
Well, what I'm getting at here is when this whole thing first came up before the planning board, I think it was in April, the next day, I went over and talked to Mr. Haskett, and he showed me where there's a hole, like I said, a whole boatload of these 50-foot wide lots.
Yes.
So, what are you talking about when you say 10 to 12 lots?
Those are the vacant lots, undeveloped lots.
Okay, right. I just wanted to make that distinction because for the rest of us in the room, we're talking about a lot of lots here, not 10 to 12 lots only.
Oh, yeah, we are talking about, as you said, a boatload of lots that are 50-foot wide lots.
Okay, that's the point I was trying to clarify here.
And those lots, all of those lots were platted before Southern Shores became a town.
Exactly.
Wait, so, am I correct in understanding, Sam, that when the original vision statement, when this was originally plotted, they were all 50-foot wide lots? And so, the original vision of the town had 50-foot wide lots?
I don't know if, I don't know if all the lots were 50-foot wide lots, but there were a lot of 50-foot wide lots that were platted during the original development.
But prior to the town being...
But prior to the town being. As far as the land use plan, the first land use plan was...
1981.
81. Okay.
I did some research.
And I don't know what the vision statement was like in 1981.
Low density.
Okay.
Actually, to answer Chris, this issue was addressed by the town. Town was established in the late 70s, and then in 81, they addressed lots and lot coverage saying if you build a house on two 50-foot, they become one. So, if you look back at the codes, and I did, but, you know, and basically, nonconforming lots, if they become combined with the next lot, they become a part of that lot. I mean, it was addressed way back in 1980s.
Can I ask you that question?
Later, later, they went on about the setbacks. That came up, and they put it at 15 feet. And that was to control the size and number of structures you could have on a lot, and also to manage stormwater, which there was no management at the time, and a lot less trees, and to control because we have septic systems and everybody's, and keep the runoff from going onto other peoples when you had failures. Back then, you understand, we didn't have the septic systems that we have today and how they can alter them and do things that we can do today. So, that was the key.
No, that's good, that's good information. But, and I guess my question to add to what you said was, Sam, in this, you mentioned an owner who might own two lots. They say they own three lots and two of them are developed. Are you saying that they cannot develop the third one at all?
That has to be recombined with the other two.
In order to be developed. So, even though the other two houses are built, they can't, they literally, that lot becomes unbuilt.
No, on those two lots, one house is developed.
No, but let's say, but I'm using your example. Let's say there's three lots, same owner.
Right.
Two houses are built. One is vacant. This vacant lot, which I would think would be an orphan, as you termed it, which is a good term, but what I'm understanding from what you're saying in language is that, no, they can't actually develop that lot, even though the houses are built on the other two. Is that wrong?
That's not what he's saying.
What I'm saying is, if you've got three lots, and there's a house built on two of them, that third lot has to be combined with the other two lots.
So, literally, the lot is valueless because they can't sell it? They have to recombine it, even though the house is already on the two and the lot lines are in place? I'm trying to understand. So, you're going to take that other lot from them? I'm just, I want to make sure I understand.
No, I understand.
It's not that they, it's not that they, when they, because in the example that you gave, if they're across the property line, that's clear, like they're on two lots, and let's say they want to do something in the future on that lot, well, that I get. But in the case where there's, I would consider that an orphan because even though it's the same ownership, there's houses on the other things, there's permitted structures. So, I guess, I want to know from your standpoint, is your interpretation is how the ZTA currently reads in that that lot, third lot, would be taken away?
That third lot would be combined with the adjacent lot or lots.
It's not a marketable property, though. It would not be a marketable property.
Excuse me? I'm sorry.
It would not be a marketable property if it's taken...
It would not be a marketable property if it's taken away. It's immarketable.
No, it's not, you can't sell it.
No, it would be combined with the other lots. Or lot.
But it's already got, it's already got lot lines and it's platted legally. This owner did nothing illegal, right? I mean, let's assume.
Right.
And there's not a house on it. But they, it's not like they own two vacant lots because there are probably very few of those recently. But, okay, that's, that's my question.
I think Ms. Councilman McDonald's history is very interesting to know, but I think the change in side setbacks to fifteen feet occurred around year two thousand.
Yeah, it was later.
Yeah, and it was an attempt to control-
Stormwater runoff and-
Stormwater, well, the change to fifteen foot was to try and address the large homes issue.
Well, it was to address the number of structures, more so than large homes. They had a limit of bedrooms at that point.
Yes.
Which was taken away.
But I remember being in the audience of council at that time, but what, that's, that whole discussion, Ms. Councilman, is kind of a lead-in for a question to you. Why is it that for those fifty-foot wide lots, those ten to twelve that we're talking about?
The vacant lots.
Why did you not take it back to the original ten-foot setback as opposed to the twelve-foot?
The original draft proposed a ten-foot setback, and the planning board recommended a twelve-foot setback.
Okay. Is there a reason that you didn't go to the ten-foot?
The planning board just felt that the twelve-foot was more appropriate.
Okay.
But it wouldn't, but what you're, so the setbacks changed over time?
The setbacks have changed over time. I would expect initially there was no setbacks. Then it went to a ten-foot setback, and then it went to a fifteen-foot setback.
And you recommended twelve.
And in this ZTA, it recommends a twelve-foot. One of the other things that I failed to mention was that the current code, when it talks about combining lots, the language is a little bit fuzzy, and it needed clarification.
That's quite an understatement.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Sam, let me ask you one other question. In the original proposal of this, it said five years previous ownership, and this one says seven.
Yes.
What was the reasoning for that?
Planning board just felt that a longer period of time should be there, so the planning board settled on seven.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just to interject one quick thing. There is some terminology being reported out there. For transparency purposes, I think the town planner and the town attorney should be asked to clarify on this terminology of subdivided lots. There's an implication going on that a lot of these lots have been subdivided since development. And I think that needs to be clarified because there's a lot of that being reported out there. These are subdivided lots, the fifty-footers.
And in fact, they were not subdivided.
I would just ask if you, I recommend that you get the planner to speak to that.
Sure, Wes, can you address that for us? Or I could ask Ben to address it.
I'll be glad to address it. The term subdivision and the term recombination are terms of art that mean specific things. And there's one other issue that Mr. Berry raised earlier and that other folks have raised is whether or not the town regulates subdivision. Subdivision is defined in the statute very clearly as not a recombination, and it's some other things. But essentially, when you break a part, a larger piece of land into smaller, sellable lots, that's a subdivision. The town has an ordinance, a chapter, on how you do that. And currently, when you do that, you have to meet the requirements of that chapter, which would make you have to have at least a hundred-foot wide lots. So, there is no legal ability right now to take a parcel of land and break it apart and sell it without going through the town's subdivision process. Now, I say that, there are some weirdities about estates and other strange things that just are impossible to deal with unless they come up. But in terms of someone taking a piece of land, breaking it apart, and selling individual lots, you have to file the town's subdivision ordinance, and you have to meet the current standards of the town's subdivision ordinance. And it's a number of pages long. The standards aren't that complicated to meet. It's pretty much a square lot that has certain widths and depths and has certain access to roads and utilities. Recombination is defined in the statutes as well, as any time you take lots that were previously part of a larger parcel, which most everybody considers that at some point, all lots next to each other were part of a larger parcel. You might have to go back a very long way for them to be part of the same parcel. But essentially, what people say is that if you've got two lots and they're next to each other, you can legally recombine them under, and it's not, by definition, it is not a subdivision. Because a subdivision, there's a specific exemption for recombinations. So, putting something back together is a term of art where someone goes and files a plat and says, these three lots that were previously platted are now lot X, or lot X one, X two, and X three, but they're new lots. So, in the past, what happened was there was a subdivision of numerous areas, various subdivisions of areas of the town. Huge amount of those subdivisions were done with fifty-foot wide lots. The fact that those fifty-foot wide lots were later sold together to people is not a recombination. It's a sale of two fifty-foot wide lots together to someone. So, the next step in the process is that a number of people built on multiple fifty-foot wide, or seventy-five-foot wide, or whatever foot-wide lots, next to each other with large houses, some of them crossing boundary lines, some of them not, but they still treat the whole group of lots as an individual use of residential property. So, that's another area where, but the lots as a legal lot are still separate. And what's happening is the people who have often treated these lots as one unit are now discovering that it may be more profitable, or someone else is buying from them and determining that it may be more profitable, to break them back up and use them as the individual platted lots. And that's what this ordinance is meant to deal with. Now, in nineteen eighty-one, I didn't go back and look at the minutes because I work on the reality of, I don't really care what they said at the time because what they wrote in the ordinance is what matters. And what the ordinance says for nineteen eighty-one is you treat lots that are non-conforming and next to each other as if they're one lot. But tellingly, the next two provisions in the ordinance say, if something else happens, you recombine them. So, that nineteen eighty-one provision, while it may have been meant for someone to force recombination, it doesn't say it. And even worse, there are the parts that do say it. So, that makes it even clearer that the part that didn't say it didn't intend to mean that. Now, drafting problem, whatever it was, I think I was five, so, maybe, not even five yet, since it was July seventh, so it was a long time ago. But-
Not that long ago.
For some of y'all. But that's what the problem is with the current ordinance, is that some things trigger treatment as if it's recombined. Some things trigger recombinat-, recombination. But they don't always trigger recombination when you want to, and they don't always trigger treatment the way you want to. Because even for the treatment, one way to, another way to look at that portion about treating lots that are together is that if someone came in to build across lot lines, some zoning departments would say, well, you can't do that, you've got separate lots, you can't do that. So, what this provision could be seen as, and it reads more like as, is permissive to allow you to build across multiple lots, not to force you to treat multiple lots as one. So, that's part of what we're trying to change. What we're trying to change is that we're trying to make people treat multiple lots that they have typically treated as, that are either non-conforming or that they have typically treated as one combined residential use. We're trying to force them to recombine those lots legally so that they will be one lot and cannot later be subdivided because they won't meet, well, cannot later be subdivided unless they do meet the town's subdivision ordinance, whatever the provisions are at the time when they try and do it. Today, it would be challenging. But certainly, somebody could have enough lots that they could recombine them and then potentially re-subdivide them. That's how, that's how subdivisions work.
And what would you do if you had, like, if you owned many lots, let's say hypothetically, and you, you know, two hundred and fifty feet of lots, so you could divide them into like a loaf of bread, hundred-foot section, hundred-foot section, but naturally, you're going to have a fifty-foot section left over. How would the-
What you have to do under the current, under the proposed ordinance, is that you would have to treat them, you would either have to combine them as one-
Okay.
-or as many lots as you can do that all meet the current standards.
So, you'd have to be, everyone would have to be more than a hundred?
Right. So, you could do, if it was a two fifty, you know, five fifties and it added to two fifty, you could do a hundred and a hundred and fifty, or you could do a two hundred and fifty. You might be able to do two one-twenty-fives.
Yeah.
But everything has to meet the standards, or you have to grab it all together as one and make it one new lot. So, with that, are you ready for me to open the public hearing portion? Hopefully, I've minimized some questions. Mr. Berry, you're first on the list. And I will open the public hearing for proposed ZTA eighteen dash oh six dash oh three.
Right.
Mr. Berry?
Appreciate it. So, back on the issue of the three lots that you have, you know, and there's a house on two, there's an empty one. Should the landowner have the option to, selling it to his neighbor who wants to have a little more lot coverage? He's got two lots already, he's got a house on it, wants to build a pool, but he needs more lot coverage. So, the owner that has three lots with a house on two, would he be restricted in selling that other lot that he has to the owner next door? Do you want to leave that as an option? It's a matter of what ifs. You have to kind of leave it? I still like the idea of not building anything on fifty-foot lots because I think that takes away the ambiance for the town. And I implore you guys to figure out how to do that because I've got houses. If they got torn down, it's financially better for me to build two houses on those.
And when-
The profit is, and the town gets more tax money. So, this, but it takes away the, from the ambiance. So, if you're looking from the revenue side, you'll get more money for two houses. Okay? Oh, there'll be more revenue, period. But that changes the touch and feel of the town. Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions, sir?
I don't have any of this council.
But I mean, just stay with the town, what we got. Don't make it a little mini-house town. Thank you.
And I will point out one last thing, too, is that there's always been a provision in the town code that I'm aware of that allows for individual non-conforming lots that don't have other lots owned by the same people or around them to build on them. And there's a reason for that, and we've discussed it at the past meetings. But if you get to the point where you've totally taken the value of someone's property, you will ultimately have to buy that from them. And the US Supreme Court has said that forcing someone to recombine two lots is not a taking. But they have absolutely said that if you take all value of one lot, it will be a taking. So, that's why if someone has an individual lot in the middle of nowhere, that's a fifty-foot lot that they've always had, they will, under this ordinance, under the past ordinance, and probably throughout the history of the town, be able to build a single-family residence upon that property.
But if, just back to Sam's example, though, let's say that they own three lots, the two, those, they have two houses legally conforming with today's rules, let's say, and there's one lot left over, what do you do?
I think you would, I think currently you would probably have to recombine all three, but I'd have to look at it, you may treat it as the two, the one next to it is the one that's treated as the whole unit.
Like, that's the orphan?
Yeah, that it's tied to the one that it's close to rather than the other, but, you know, it-
But if those other two are perfectly legal, and they're not built on across the line, let's say, let's just, then they lose that, they lose that market-
If it's the same ownership.
If it's the same ownership.
Yeah.
Is that a taking?
Why would that be a taking?
Well, you're not taking the value, you're combining the value with, and they've got a bigger lot. They've got more coverage area, they can build a bigger house on that lot. They can tear down the old house and build a bigger house, they've got more lot coverage, they've got more surface area, they've got, you know, they've got another place to put a driveway. You're not taking the whole value of that other lot by forcing them to recombine.
But even if the other lots are perfectly compliant? So, they can sell, by the way, they can sell one of the individual homes on a fifty-foot lot that's already built?
No.
No.
If they tried to sell any of those three lots, they're going to have to recombine something.
So, somebody who's got a home on a fifty-foot wide lot now literally can't sell their home in this ordinance?
No, they can. They just have to recombine it with the other lots in this.
But they don't, but-
If they don't own the adjacent lot, they can.
Yeah, if they don't own the adjacent lots, they can sell it.
But even if it's already been done, even if it's already built, it's done. One of those houses is built and done.
There's a lot of those houses built and done.
I know that, well, that's my concern, you're exactly right.
But there's not a lot of opportunity where there's two houses, two built houses owned by the same people under the same ownership in adjacent, non-conforming lots. It might come up.
Right, right.
But I think you're really getting into the subset of not likely.
Well, but nothing more likely would be that you have multiple lots and they, and they've got a lot across, like, three lots and a lot across the border. Well, I understand that that, one across the border, that makes-
I think one of the things that's natural here is that we start hypothesizing on different scenarios. What if? I'm sorry, what?
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Let me go ahead and finish on Mr. House.
Okay.
Mr. House, you're next on the list.
My name is Rick House, house engineering. The reason, I think, first of all, thank you for letting me talk for a few minutes. The reason I think ZTA eighteen dash oh seven was written was because I was the engineering firm who represented three of the four variances for twelve-foot side setbacks reduced from fifteen-foot. Three have been, three of the four have been approved. Two I had gotten approved at the Board of Adjustment level. The last one is the one you're, we're discussing right now. There's ten to twelve fifty-foot undeveloped lots, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Wes. One of them has the scenario that Chris and staff has been talking about, where we have a house. Mr. White is here tonight. But anyway, there is a house that was built twenty years ago on two fifty-foot wide lots. He's been a property owner for twenty years in the town of Southern Shores. There's one house on the two fifty-foot lots. He, two years ago, bought the fifty-foot lot next to him to develop it as another house. Not knowing about the variances, all the things that have been going on. The last variance that was approved was January of this year for twelve-foot setbacks. Those two houses have been built and are in a rental program and are done tastefully. Mr. White would like that same opportunity. He did not buy three fifty-foot wide lots and build a house on two of them twenty years ago. He built, he built on two lots, one house, and then subsequently, eighteen years later, bought a fifty-foot wide lot and would like to develop on it. We brought that to the Board of Adjustment last month. That was denied because we brought it, I think, at ten-foot side setbacks consistent with the zoning text amendment that was in front of the board at the time. The board approved twelve-foot side setbacks, and he is the only one that would be adversely affected by this zoning text amendment. I would ask that the council please take that into consideration. He is the only one. And I would not, I would think that would be unfair to him. He's been property owner in Southern Shores for twenty years, and I think there should be some part of this amendment, or this zoning text amendment, to allow for him to- be some part of this amendment, or this zoning text amendment, to allow for him to build on his 50-foot wide lot. It has nothing to do with the two 50-foot lots that he bought 20 years ago. And that's all I have to say. Y'all's consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. House. Anyone else in the public wish to speak for the public hearing? I'll just call you Ann this time. That way, I can't get your last name wrong, as I tend to do at each meeting.
Uh, Ann Scherzmann, 69 Hickory Trail. I have indeed been using the term subdivision and, but as in lay context, and I apologize for that, not as a, a term of art. I would like to address the situation at 315 North Dogwood Trail, where there are three lots. One is now for sale, 315A, and it is only a 60-foot wide lot, and it's only 13,330 square feet. So, it's non-conforming, but it was purchased as that non-conforming lot just two years ago. My question to you, if you could answer this, how is that allowed to happen? Where that 60 feet were 60, um, the one lot, A, B, C, A was, I called it a subdivision, A was allowed to fragment from B and C. Mr. Galv, can you answer that? There, it was a 37,000-square-foot land parcel that...
In the, in the, under the current ordinance, that's exactly what everyone else has been doing. They've got a parcel of land that's got three underlying subdivided lots that were subdivided at initially years ago, and they bought the parcel of land, and then they've sold out the lots. I, I mean, it's exactly what's been happening.
But it, this was, this was as one combined lot sold, as one combined lot.
And, and that's just like every, every one of these others in the deed, it's gonna list its lot, block, you know, lot 62, block C of subdivision X, lot, and, and then lot C, or lot 63, block B, subdivision X, and lot 64, and they're gonna put that into deed, but those lots are still there until somebody actually recombines them as a separate lot.
How is it that the previous ordinance didn't prevent it? Where's the gap in the previous ordinance?
Where's the gap in the previous ordinance?
Yeah, in the previous ordinance.
It's A1 that says you treat them as one, not force recombination.
All right. Um, so, when you have a one combined residential use, that's not a recombination? If I, I, my, I own a house now that's sitting on two 50-foot wide lots, I've always treated it as one 100-foot wide lot.
And if you go really quickly and sell it in, in the next 30 minutes...
So, all these years, uh, it was permissible to have what I would have called subdivided it.
What, it's, I wouldn't call it subdivided, I would call it...
Separate sales.
Re-separated, re, re, you know, resold as originally subdivided.
And at this point, what's going to, what, is there enforcement in this ZTA so that we don't have continued problems?
Well, there's enforcement in the whole zoning ordinance and in the whole subdivision ordinance. I mean, we don't add it...
Will someone still be able to sell undetected a 50-foot wide lot?
I mean, I think the problem, they're not gonna trigger this until they come in for a zoning permit, because the town doesn't know what's getting sold and what doesn't. But I, I'm hoping it's gonna work just like it does in the subdivision ordinance, which says essentially that a sale of property subdivided illegally via the subdivision ordinance is invalid.
All right. Well, that answers my question, thank you. Because until you come into the planning department asking for a permit, it's not known that you have a non-conforming lot, if you haven't been told that.
It may be that you have not known that you have a non-con, I mean, somebody might know, but it, that's when, that's when someone's gonna look at the ordinance and see whether or not you have a, an issue with whether or not it gets triggered.
All right, I don't want to take any more time. Thank you.
And, I mean, any, anyone else wishing to speak from the public? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing portion. I think Mr. McDonald...
I was gonna ask you, so, and I don't know this properly, but could they, or even Chris's example, could they sell that to someone else? Instead it wouldn't pop up into a construction planning? You can sell a property and then don't go to plan, it goes to tax and the land records and all that. So, if I bought the, the lot that Chris is talking about, 50, not knowing what the zoning and the whatever, then I'm a different owner, could I put a house on it because it's a 50-foot lot?
No. I mean, not if you pass this ZTA, it's trying, it's trying to say...
It's written to be seven years, the way it's here in this document.
Well, I didn't own it seven years, I'm just...
When I talk about this, this particular situation, the way, well, this ETA is written, there would be seven, you'd have to have them that property for seven years prior to this ZTA being approved, to be able to sell.
You know what I'm asking, Ben?
I think so.
Could he sell me a property, non-conforming, and not tell me?
Yeah, and then you would come into the zoning department to get permits, and...
And click in and say you can't build.
And Wes is gonna do two things. He's gonna say, "You can't get a permit," and he's gonna call me and Peter.
But, but actually, it's an interesting question, though. I guess, I guess you'd find, yeah, I guess you'd find out. Because at that point, at that point, there is a different owner.
Otherwise...
It doesn't matter, it's a different owner at that point.
Well, that's the problem. Otherwise, you might as well not adopt this, because if you don't close that loophole, you've got a loophole the size of a freight train, a drive-through.
Right, I understand, I understand.
It's exactly what people have been doing. They would just have to look at it very carefully and time the sale, make sure they hit all the spots, and then they would come in with separate owners, and, and you'd be stuck with section A that allows them to, to do it.
Okay.
So, without that provision that says you can't build if they're not recombined, if they are used and in same ownership for a seven-year period, you know, or within the seven-year period, then, um, then, you know, you've defeated the purpose of, of having it.
Well, and let me ask you a question, because, and I asked, Wes a while ago, or Sam, I'm not sure who I asked, but you wrote this code with five years instead of seven. Is there any advantage to five versus seven?
I don't, it, it was more or less, it was more or less a number that I thought, we've been seeing this for a couple of years, so I wanted to go a little bit farther than that. And, um...
But why not two years then?
It might encompass, I mean, it, you still might, you don't know what's out there that's been sold that might be problematic if it's not within the two years.
Yeah, you're right.
But, I mean, five years gave you a little bit more time, seven years by the planning board gave you more time. It gets more complicated to figure out whether or not people treated it as the same ownership and other things, and, you know, the farther you go back.
How do you do it with, where there's multiple owners? There's two owners of the same, of the same, of, see, same, Sam's example, there's two family owners of the same three lots, what do you do?
You look to the ownership provisions to figure out whether or not same ownership occurs.
But it's, but it's, so it's the same ownership, but it's different people, let's say.
Yeah, well, you look at, what it says is it's an affiliate, and you treat all those as, as one. You, you treat everyone who meets the affiliate definition as, as the same ownership.
So, your recommendation is five years? Or are you good with about seven?
I don't have a particular recommendation on either one.
I just wanna make sure.
I think, I think you could, you could change it either way you wanted to, or, or make it shorter, or, or longer.
Now, are you comfortable that this will cover?
No. I'm, I'm comfortable that it will cover everything that I've tried to think of, but, but there...
No, I mean, are you comfortable that this will cover those non-conforming lots and the 50-foot issue?
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, I think that, given what we've seen people do, this is my best, to my best ability, trying to capture what we've seen people do that we did not want to happen, and it should encompass most of those situations. There is one, you know, one thing that was pointed out that was changed at the planning board level, but I think their change, ultimately, expanding it is fine with one, one caveat. So, at the planning board level, for an affiliate of an individual owner, it included a spouse of the owner. The planning board modified that to be a family member of the, or what I defined as a family member of the owner. What they had said was the owner's spouse, lineal descendants, siblings, and parents, whether related by blood or marriage, as in whether they're, uh, they're by blood, or stepparents, or stepkids. The issue there is, if you expand, the farther you expand family, the more likely you get in a situation where grandfather...
Great-grandfather.
Whoever transferred it to three brothers, and those three brothers have all, they might hate each other, they might have 14-foot walls between the properties and have never treated the properties the same, but they would be encompassed by that broad family member. There, the, the way to change that is to restrict it, you know, to spouses, but then it leaves open the ability for two brothers who happen to have a really great idea about how to sell a piece of property to, to work out how they were gonna do it. The only other change you could have in there is some provision about scianture or intent, intent to avoid the statute, uh, the ordinance. Question is, how do you ultimately end up proving that? Um, at the time of someone coming into a zoning application, you ask them to fill out a application that says, you know, "Do you have same ownership as this is defined?" And they say, "Well, yeah, but we didn't intend to, to, to do this as any kind of trick. We, we were, we were trying to, you know, we're just friends who happen to have houses." So, I think that it's a, there's a dynamic there that either you broaden it too far or you narrow it too narrow, and it, and it, uh, it's something for you to consider
I guess my concern, uh, as I listen to all this conversation about the lot width, lot width and, uh, and the ambience of Southern Shores, is it, there's gotta be some, some provision made that's gonna be equitable. I don't know what that is. I don't know how you, how you address that or how you approach it, because there's gonna be people who are gonna be punished by this, who wouldn't, who wouldn't or shouldn't have been punished by it. And I don't know what their options are. I guess they can come back before some board and ask for, ask for, for some consideration, but we don't, we don't mention that or make, make provision for it. Can we do that?
I mean, I think that they, they would, they would, not sure exactly what you would vary, but someone may be able to seek a variance and show that there's an unnecessary hardship and, and that it wasn't their cause, and that it was due to a unique property and meet the variance standards, and if they meet it, then you grant them, then the board of adjustment has to grant them a variance, or the planning board acting as the board of adjustment in the town's case.
But, but I mean, you've got an example in, in the audience about it, I mean, he, in good faith, purchased it. Like, is there a way to say that folks that, you know, how do we not pun, we've got an example, how do we not punish that fellow in the audience? How, how do we do that?
Well, you know, the, the, no, I'm not gonna be as harsh as, as Ann is, that he's supposed to know the law, but the, the, you, if you wanted to not punish, you could delay it and see if he got another shot at a variance and see what happened. But then you're gonna leave it open for other people...
But in his, in his case, he's already got...
Other people who are gonna continue to break apart the property. You could plug something in here that exempted a purchase of a lot that was never treated as, see, right now, it's not the treatment of the, it's section E that's gonna cause him a problem, not section D. Section E just says prior to the transfer of land that includes a non-conforming lot, then all adjacent lots have to be, have to be put together. And I think that that provision is there, I mean, I think that the common purpose of, or the common objective of dealing with non-conformities across all non-conformities of all types is to get rid of them. And over time, you get rid of them through attrition. Um, you know, in other areas, you get rid of them through, people have 50% rules, and similar to how this happens if you, if you're redeveloping. Um, and, and that's what happens from an attrition perspective. I mean, you could put a delay provision in, but you'd have to apply it to others. Um, you could potentially try and craft something that said that, you know, if a lot was purchased to be combined with others within a certain period of time, maybe it's exempt, but I'm not sure that there aren't others out there that might still fall in that category as well. You know, somebody might have still, they might, somebody else might have bought that third lot because they wanted to treat it like it was one piece of property, and now they may say, "Oh, no, I don't wanna do that anymore." And that's going against the purpose of the concept of, over time, losing non-conformities or reducing non-conformities. And I think you could do that, if you wanted to do that, but I think it would take some thought.
We're on top.
I'm sorry?
We're on it.
We're waiting for Ben to finish up his, his explanation of what was going on there. Counsel, I guess we need to talk...
Close the public hearing.
It's closed.
Okay. I guess we're at the point where it'd be up to make, somebody has to make a motion of what we're gonna do here.
I just move that we adopt as written, presented from the planning board. I second it.
So, that's, uh, ZTA 18, 18-07. Is that correct? And have a motion to adopt that as written by the planning board?
Yes.
And I've had a second, have a second to that.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
I, I feel like there's so many questions out there, and that I, I'm not, I'm not saying there isn't a way to get there, but, but I just, there's so many unintended consequences on this, that I feel like they're trying to put this blanket over the whole thing, and I'm worried that we're gonna hurt more than, than just the fellow in the audience, I'm worried that this is gonna affect a lot of folks. And so, for that reason, I guess I would prefer to table it, um, but if, you know, if, if that can't be happened, because that, because that, in my mind, that's taking, we're, we're taking away his property. I don't think he did anything wrong, um, and legally, I think, whether he has a case or not, I'm not an attorney, but, but I feel like, like, he, he didn't do anything wrong, and I feel like he's being penalized. 50-foot wide lots don't scare me in the way they're scaring maybe other folks. This was a part of the community when it started. And so, otherwise, they would've just done 100-foot lots. It wouldn't, it wouldn't have been a big deal, because there's nothing there. You could've divided the lines however you wanted. And, and since there's nothing there, there were no owners, it could've been 75, it could've been whatever the arbitrary number is.
It is number.
So, to say that it's not in the character of the town, I, I disagree with. I like that the setbacks reduction to account for the new stormwater, um, realities and the new septic realities. I think you don't want it to look like a double-wide, so I, the aesthetics, I very much agree on that. But I, I don't, I wish there was a way to do it with more of a scalpel instead of an axe, like we're doing now. And I, so, to that, to that extent, I, I'm opposed to this resolution, but I might be in support of a more nuanced version.
I'd like to comment, um, I think Mr. Nation's points are very valid, however, I think that if we don't stop this now, we, it's gonna get way out of control. And that I would rather deal with some of these situations, like Mr. White's, on an individual case.
Yep.
But for right now, let's move forward, because...
I agree.
It is already moving forward out there in the real world. So, you know, for tonight, I, I'm all for just adopting this. And then, as I started to say earlier, at the planning board, they started to get into some hypothesizing, which is natural, it's human nature, well, what if this, or what of that? Well, how many actual what ifs are there out there on the ground, you know, and...
Lots.
There may be... There may be, but I think that's. To get the, to accomplish the mission of stopping runaway development and having it look like KDA or Kitty Hawk, you know, as some people have characterized it. Now, I think we need to pass this tonight and then go back and tweak it as we need to in time.
I agree.
I, I don't agree. I think you, I think you're, you're taking up the position that we, we're not, we're not being very, uh, very realistic in what we have, the situation we have here. We didn't plant the lots to begin with. They, they were planted by the, by the original developer. I, uh, I don't mind voting on this tonight, and I don't mind voting against it. I'm, I'm not going to shy away from that. I think we, we need to be a little more, we need to put more work into this. I think we could devote a little more time to it and a little more resolution and come up with a, with a better plan than we have now. Not punishing, or punishing fewer people. That's just my take.
Well, our intent is not to punish anybody, but at the same time, I agree with Jim and I agree with what Gary said. We're going to have runaway development while we're trying to figure it out, and we may never figure it out. And we can't meet every hypothesis, I'm sorry.
You, you, you said runaway development, we've got, what, ten or twelve lots?
There's not that many.
No, no.
No, 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 that's not it. Let me give you a good example. I own a piece of property over on Ocean Boulevard. It's got a house sitting on two fifty-foot lots. I could go in there and tear that house down right now, and I could sell both of those lots. And from an economical standpoint, that would be probably a good move on my part. I can make a lot of money. But that's not, that's not my nature to do that, because the reason I came to Southern Shores, it's like George said, I like the ambiance, I like the low density. If I didn't like that, I would have moved over to Kill Devil Hills or Kitty Hawk or somewhere else. So, no, it is runaway development, Tom, there's a loophole there.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not espousing runaway development. I'm not espousing going away from, going to twenty-five-foot lots or, or anything like that. I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. At the same time, I think we have to consider, and maybe the only way to consider each individual case is have the person come before the, 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 uh.
They can get a variance.
And ask for a variance, yeah.
But there's no guarantee on the variance, and that's, that's the problem.
There's never a guarantee.
Well, there's no guarantee when you buy the property either.
I'm sorry, yes. I mean, I guess, because.
We're fixing an old issue.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, we've had a little bit of discussion, any more discussion about it?
What was the motion, to accept this?
A motion, the motion that made was to, was to approve.
Jim, is there any way we can wait one month? Let's, let's craft this a little bit better, let's work a little harder.
I'm going to, I've got to go with Gary afraid on this one.
Okay. Call for it, but, uh, let's, let's get later.
All in favor of, um, of passing public hearing, or the, the recommendation of the planning board on ZTA eighteen zero seven, indicate by, by voting, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. Motion's made and carried.
You've got to have a second reading, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
At next month's meeting.
Counsel, please note, we will have a second, second meeting on that. And I would like, like to ask the clerk, is that left for the July? The July meeting?
Can we work to tweak this during that time frame?
You can. Uh, that's more of a question for the attorney.
But what's the, what's the tweaks, Jim, is the issue?
Well, that's if we can find one of those hypotheses.
We've got one, we've got hypotheses, right there.
He can also sell his property in that.
Yes, he can.
They could have sold his property before tonight.
If, if you voted. Yeah, I have. Has to come back for one more vote.
Right.
General public comment.
Uh, excuse me, Tom, before you move on. You said you are putting it on the July agenda for the second reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we did, I'm sorry, I should have spoken louder. Something else that has gone on the, this end of July, I forgot.
We have several, we have several items on for July.
Okay. General public comment, George Berry. Are you up again?
I'm confused. We passed, we passed the last one, the last table.
Was it passed or was it?
It passed, but.
But you're going to, you're going to revisit?
It has to be.
We have to revisit because it has to be a super majority.
What's traditionally been reported, though, is that it failed. That's incorrect, though.
So, it passed, but you're going to look at it again.
But it has to have a second reading, it did not fail.
Yeah, I think, just on that issue, compassion is a good thing. There are some people that have some issues, and I think an individual basis, you should do that. But anyway, different topic.
It passed.
Yeah. Uh, so, the topic is maybe new to you, maybe, maybe not. But the town of Duck has recently passed regulations to allow golf carts, golf carts and low-speed vehicles for use on the town's property. They can't drive on Route Twelve. They can cross it. You have to go a certain speed, they have to have certain equipment. Golf carts have to have some modifications in their regulation. I, um, I asked the town to get a hold of the regulations, because it's already been done down in Hatteras. Duck is now doing it. Uh, it's, uh, I mean, you can make the regulations as tight as you want. You have to have a driver's license, have to be adult, you know, just like you're driving a car. Okay, can't, maybe, maybe you only drive during daylight hours, whatever. But the reg, I'd say start with a regulation, like you have a duck. Take a look at it, there are two of them, and see if they, if it's right, and take a look at it. Because there are a lot of people that have golf carts here, some maybe drive illegally, some legal. Uh, but, uh, I think it would be a good, uh, thing for us to have. Our speed on the, on the road is twenty-five, so these golf carts go that speed, or at least twenty. Uh, I think the duck, duck regulation is twenty, twenty miles an hour, but, uh, most of the golf carts can go like twenty.
Are they authorizing golf carts or low-speed vehicles?
Both.
Yeah.
They have regulations that include both in their, you know, the regulation is covers both of those. Low-speed vehicles, which are DOD, you know, uh, NC DOT authorized vehicles. And they also have regulations for using golf carts. You know, people go from their house to the beach, okay?
Okay.
Just another thing to move the community forward, because it's happening across the United States. Okay, thank you. Thanks, George. I'd close this general public comment for the second or third, second time, I guess. Thank you. Underwrite a mate other business, I, my, the only thing I want to say tonight is I want to thank Sam Williams again, for the record, for his, his service to the town for the past nine years. Been a, been a real asset to us, and I appreciate what he's done. Thank you, Sam. Anyone else?
I'd like to mention.
Uh, I'd like to say the same, too, about Sam. I really appreciate your, uh, your service. I understand you've put a lot of time in it, personal time, and I can certainly see why you're ready for a little break. But thank you very much, appreciate it.
Chris?
Um, I'll third that. I know that Sam put in, he wasn't just putting in time with the planning board, he was putting in time with Chickahaw. And I'll bet, and I bet you I don't know the half of it. So, um, it's, it's, we appreciate your service and your time and all your, your thought and hard work. Getting through the module was, was not easy, but we got there and we appreciate it.
Well, and I'd like to add the Dogwood Trails Task Force, the Land Use Plan Update, and all the other things that you did as part of that. All of that is critical.
Yep.
And Councilman McDonough, I am in to jump in there, but while I'm speaking, let me go ahead and mention that, um, in the last few weeks, I've been to so many meetings, social events and other types. There includes a tennis, Civic Association Tennis Club Social, uh, the breakfast games put on by the Civic Association's Boat Club. There's going to be a new, uh, another party celebrating more improvements at Seashore Park at the end of June. There's been church picnics and tomorrow evening, I think it is, that, that Duck, we've been invited to the dedication of the Duck, um, new walkway up there. And last night, I went to Room at the End. They had a cookout at their intake center in Manio for all the volunteers involved with Room at the End. My point in bringing all this up is, is that the town of Southern Shores is far more than us guys sitting up here and you guys sitting out there. We're a community. There's a lot of opportunity for volunteerism and getting to know folks. It, it's a great way as council people from, that I have found, to find out what's going on in the community and what's the pulse of the community. It's, it's invaluable, anyway.
Thank you, Jim.
Sam, thank you. Appreciate everything, I'll see you at dance. We have fun with our granddaughter. The, the best thing is having grandchildren, right, Sam? Uh, I have to say, this was a long and a large agenda. If we have this much on our plate at the next month, we may need to look at having another meeting. It's nine o'clock, folks, we've been here for about four hours.
Real close.
You know, I remember somebody complaining about our long meetings, but this was, and last month was pretty long. So, you know, we might need to go back to.
Or not, or not talk so much, one or the other.
Well, I don't think we talked that much tonight.
I'm just kidding, Gary.
And we didn't have the, but if you look around, there's only about eight or so people left out here. And when we started, it was a full house. And I will make, with that, I will make a motion, adjourn.
There you go, I was going to ask for that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I know the motion's been made, but I wanted to address something if I could.
Sure.
Just want to remind the council and the public that low-speed vehicles are allowed in Southern Shores. LSVs are regulatorily allowed. So the difference that we're addressing is that, that is being brought up is golf carts, not LSVs. July, July meeting, I think, will, I hope you'll be pleasantly surprised. I think we do have significantly less on the agenda, the staff does anyway, that's coming from planning board and us. So I think it'll be less, way less than this. And I just put a record, wanted to remind, I did bring this up about four months ago. I will not be here at the October, um, meeting, so we'll try to, we're going to try to schedule things September, November. And if we have to call a special, recommend a special meeting to you, we would for October, later in the month.
Thank you, Peter.
Anyway, excuse me.
Motion adjourned, got a second? Hold the paper. Meigs adjourned, thank you.